The Steamship Authority is a proud partner in many Falmouth community events, including town meeting coverage, and for good reason. Not only do we have a terminal and offices here, about one-third of our employees call Falmouth their home. We always work hard to serve our neighbors, friends, and the traveling public. We recently put seven new electric buses into service at our Falmouth parking lots. Soon we'll be adding new vessels to our fleet, continuing work on our energy-efficient wood sole terminal buildings, and adding solar panels at our largest parking lot. At the Steamship Authority, we're serving the islands and you.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Good evening. It's 6:30, and I'm calling the June 16, 2025, meeting of the Town of Falmouth Select Board to Order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I just remind everyone to silence your cell phone, and please notify the Chair if you are making a video or audio recording of this open session meeting. The placement and operation of the recording equipment should not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Thank you. So we are at recognition. I'm going to ask any other board members, do you have any recognition?
Just recognize what a nice celebration we had at the Holy Ghost Feast on Sunday this last week. It's 125th anniversary of that organization. It was well-attended.
I'd like to recognize the organizers of the Falmouth Celebrates Pride event that took place on Friday evening. It was really wonderful, well-attended, really celebratory, a lot of great food from some food trucks, a lot of really important services on hand, and it was just a really wonderful event.
Okay, thank you. Announcements, anyone? I'm just going to announce that this past weekend, Saturday, was the start of the Cape Cod Baseball League, the Falmouth Commodores, and I hope that people will be able to get out and take a game or two in. It's a great opportunity to see some really good baseball. I'll also just announce that the state has awarded Falmouth $416,000 grant for the urine diversion program for the town, and that's really a big benefit, and it'll help move that project along. Anyone else?
I would announce that on Saturday, there's going to be a volunteer build day for the Carousel of Light. If anybody's handy with tools and wants to come and help, the person, team that usually puts it up somehow is unavailable, so it's going to fall to volunteers this year. We were going to try to do it last week, but the rain changed those plans, so we're hoping for a good day on Saturday over at the Mullen Hall School, 9 o'clock.
Anyone else?
Couple of items. Wednesday of this week, there will be a celebration of the anniversary of Independence of Capo Vatara Day at the Cape Verdean Museum, and on Thursday, we will have a celebration of Juneteenth, on Juneteenth, at St. Barnabas Church, 1 to 5 p.m. Again, there will be food, both samplings of some traditional African-American soul food, as well as food trucks, live entertainment, and a little bit of a recognition ceremony.
Okay, well, we'll move into public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to public comment? Yes, Mr. Gray. Before I do, I will just mention that public comment may be made on routine matters, not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. Since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board may not participate in the discussion of the topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Gray, I live at 25 Brentwood Road in West Falmouth. I'd like to discuss two issues tonight, community and compromise. If you recall, about three years ago, the pickleball community was fighting hard to secure facilities to replace the space lost at the Lawrence School. In the process, they overwhelmed many of the town parks. Of particular concern to me at the time was the impact at Swift Park, which has, it's a small playground for young kids, ball field, two tennis courts, and a lot of parking for four automobiles, vehicles on a dirt parking area. The Recreation Committee has done an excellent job of balancing the needs of the various constituents, providing time for children to use the park, and also providing time for the pickleball players. So I think it's a major success there. Continuing to discuss for compromise, about a month ago, there were two discussions in the Enterprise related to dogs on the beaches. On the one hand, there was a picture of dogs frolicking on the beach, and there was also an article where the Beach Committee was considering imposing a $500 fine when dogs are off-leash. To be clear, this was the Beach Committee and not the Beach Department that was stating that. Being concerned, I went to the town's website to review the charter of the Beach Committee, and I didn't find one. That's why I'm here tonight. My concern is the Beach Committee seems to have a very narrow vision of their charter. It's much narrower than my vision, anyway. It seems that they would be happy if dogs were never allowed on the beach, and this perception is not supportive of our community or the town's tourism. From my perspective, sunny offseason days at the beach are very much like an Easter parade. You have adults and children meeting friends, meeting new people, enjoying the interaction of their dogs. They watch the dogs chase balls and swim in the waves. Dog walkers are self-supervising. They keep their dogs under control. They're considerate of each other. My observation, as a regular participant, is the dog walkers are extremely conscientious, and they balance their dogs' activities and pick up after them. Beach is a social space that should be available to all members of the community, and I hope our town government will encourage the sensible compromise that allows dogs to continue to frolic on the beach in the offseason. And I encourage each of you to walk on the beaches during the offseason, meet your constituents, and understand what a great community resource these beaches are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? If not, then we'll proceed to committee interviews. We will be interviewing, considering a vote to appoint committee members to regulatory boards. The first is the Board of Health, Mr. George Hofelder.
Yes?
Yeah. Okay.
I don't see Mr. Hofelder.
Okay, well, then, Mr. Topolos, if you will, Mr. Renshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the Board, Select Board knows, the Board of Health is a regulatory board, and applicants for reappointment are required to be interviewed by the Select Board prior to being appointed, or in this case, reappointed. On May 27, letters were emailed to members of the Board's committees and commissions asking them to respond whether or not they wish to be reappointed, and Mr. George P. Topolos indicated he was very much interested in being reappointed to his position on the Board of Health. The term expiration for this reappointment would be June 30, 2028, and it's staff's recommendation, Mr. Chair and Select Board, that the Board consider the reappointment of Mr. George P. Topolos.
Thank you. Is there anything in your application, or anything in addition to your application you'd like to tell us about yourself?
I would have left out the very much part of the response.
Sorry.
And I would also like to say that the other four members of the Board, and I'm very explicit, the other four are terrific people who know a lot and work very hard on the Board. The last thing I'd like to say is, related to the work of the Board of Health, is a huge issue that faces Falmouth over the next 10 to 20 years of coming up with roughly a billion dollars, and that's a billion with B, not a M, to pay for sewers, an outflow pipe, and what is left out of the town's budgets that get mentioned in the newspaper, upwards of 5,000 or more so-called innovative and alternative septic systems, which, as it stands now, individual homeowners will be paying for if they're required to put them in. I think it's imperative that the town have an open, informed discussion of a fair way to distribute the cost of this billion dollars amongst the community. I would say, as of a few weeks ago, I'm now biased because I live in Tchikit, so I, of course, think anyone who's going to get two or should get off scot-free and not pay anything. But that's a big problem. The longer you all wait to come up with a fair way to distribute the cost, the more people are going to know what group they're in, and there's going to be at least three groups. People who have to put in new septic systems, people are going to have to connect to a sewer, and households that aren't going to have to do anything. I personally don't think it's fair that those three groups should incur vastly different costs of something that's good for the whole community. But you should take what I think is a grain of salt, because I'm not an expert in how communities should distribute the cost of huge, huge capital budgets. I don't think you should count on the state to change the tax laws. I certainly don't think you should count on the federal government to come riding in on its horse with a bunch of money to help pay for this. Lots of people, when I talk to members of the community about this issue, mostly don't know about it, or they think it's far less money. The cost of putting in an IA system was quoted in a recent piece in the Enterprise as being upwards of $20,000. That's low by a factor of at least two, probably by a factor of at least three. This is going to be huge cost. I think every time I bring it up, the response I get is, yes, that's really important, but we don't have time to talk about it now. We have to make this decision about this very close-term item. The longer it gets put off, the harder it's going to get, and I just encourage, and if there's anyone from the press here, I'd love to see a headline in the newspaper without my name attached to it, that says the town is going to incur, for all its residents, a billion-dollar cost, and we should talk about how to fairly distribute that cost. Thank you.
You're going to have to own that one.
See how the Enterprise deals with that.
You should reappoint the other George, who really knows a lot about this stuff.
Just stay there for a second, if you will. Does anyone on the Board have any questions? Mr. Topolos?
No, I think I've answered my questions.
No, just a comment. Well, first of all, I understand you've come out as being the sole owner of the title of doctor on the Board of Health.
Well, physician.
Exactly.
There are lots of doctors.
And all of you on the Board of Health have an appetite for septic system blueprints that I cannot begin to fathom, but thank you for your service and for your willingness to continue with it, and thank you for your advocacy on this issue of how we distribute the costs of what we need to do, and your thought on the issue as well. If there are no other comments or questions, I would move reappointment of George P. Topolos to the Board of Health.
I would second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Too late for that.
I do believe we need to interview Dr. Hofelder, so we'll have to put that on for another meeting.
June 30 is medical table until June 30.
Thank you. On the Conservation Commission, Ronald Driscoll. Mr. Driscoll, we saw you just a couple of weeks ago, or about a month or so ago, I think.
No? No, it was about the last year.
Was it? Oh, time flies.
I'll buy that quick.
Very good. You have anything to add to what's in your application?
No, I got a great year. It's a wonderful committee. Again, the people know what they're doing, protecting the resource. There's so many committees in town, the ponds, the beach, the Health Committee, the Health Department. We're all working for the same purpose, and I just think we should all get together and maybe have a uniform voice for the people so they know what's going on. But other than that, no, I've seen some parts of Falmouth I never knew existed, and I really appreciate the opportunity and the privilege to be on the Board.
Thank you. Any members have any questions, Mr. Driscoll?
No, we just asked him last year.
Was it that one ago? Okay. Anyone like to make a motion?
Yep, I would make a motion to appoint Ronald F. Driscoll to a term ending through June 30, 2028.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll.
All right, thank you.
Okay, our next interviewee is Suzanne Murphy from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Murphy?
Hello. How are you? This side. Yes.
Yes. No gavel tonight.
No gavel.
Okay. Would you care to, you know, add something to your application? Tell us a little bit about, you know, the zoning board?
My application is long. I've been zoning for years in another town before I came here. I've been chair here almost a year. We have a great Board. We've been pretty busy, I must say, really busy, but it's been going great. We have great staff, and everything's been good, and I would love the opportunity to stay on.
Anyone have any questions, Ms. Murphy?
Just a couple of questions. You know, I think there's been a lot of robust discussion about proposals and different ideas for more density in different areas of town. I was wondering if you had any thoughts on, you know, density across Falmouth of where it's at?
Well, we have such pockets of density already, the heights, you know, down that way, Maravista. And are you talking about like Laura Moynihan's presentation that happened the other night?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the...
Yeah, well, as long as they can work it out, it's going to be not easy to do for our Board. I mean, we'll have new rules and regs, but we'll go by the bylaw. That's what we have to do.
So, did I say you're still enjoying the workload?
Yeah.
It's a lot of work, isn't it?
It's pretty challenging, I'll tell you.
Yeah, it is, but...
But we do good. I was on the negotiating team for the Sandwich Road, and that went fantastic. I was really surprised how well that went, and I thought we did a really good job.
I think you did, too. I think we all, the whole town did on that one.
Thank you.
It took every single one of us, too, to get the result we got, I think.
A lot of weeks, I mean, we would have three or four meetings a week. It's a lot.
I appreciate that.
But we got through it.
Any more? Okay. Any discussion? Anyone prepared to make a motion?
Prepared to make a motion that we appoint Suzanne Murphy to the Zoning Board of Appeals beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2030.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, we will now move on to interview and consider vote to appoint committee members to non-regulatory boards. Human Services Committee, Amy Loenberg. Good evening, Ms. Loenberg.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to this meeting.
Thank you for applying. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself, or want to add to what your application says, please?
Well, I am a retired licensed New York City social worker. I have over 40 years of experience in human services, providing direct counseling practice to clients, as well as most of my work experience has been in administrative capacity. I've supervised staff, I've mentored social work interns, I've run programs. The first half of my career, I worked with an organization called Lighthouse International, where we provided vision rehabilitation services for people with vision loss. It was a world-renowned organization, and I had run a number of programs that cut across the age spectrum, from little kids all the way up to the elderly, and it was a very rewarding experience, since we really did a great job in helping people who were experiencing vision loss to retain and regain independence. I then moved on into the field of aging. I worked in nonprofit organizations, and I was the Director of Older Adult Services for older adults living in communities. We provided support services, I did case management, we ran senior centers, social day programs, Meals on Wheels, and specialized programs that I don't think is familiar in Massachusetts called natural occurring retirement communities. We provided support for people who are aging in place in dense communities. And my husband and I moved here from New York City. We're from Brooklyn, New York, about five years ago, and we're very happy living in Falmouth. We found that the people in Falmouth were very welcoming, very kind, and we were very interested in developing community. And we joined newcomers, we joined the Falmouth Jewish Congregation, we got involved with Neighborhood Falmouth and the Falmouth Corral. I am on the Board of Directors of Neighborhood Falmouth, and I was introduced to Mike Bahari, who happens to be a member of Falmouth Jewish Congregation. He is the Chair of Neighborhood Falmouth. And after talking to him, and I have a lot of curiosity about services here on the Cape, was very familiar with services in New York City, particularly the aging services, and very different here, even coming before you is very different than coming before City Council in New York City. You're not as intimidating. Sometimes we've had to stand up and advocate for our constituents. So Mike Bahari said to me, because I asked him a lot of questions, and I did some research on my own about different services, I'm also very concerned, as an aging person myself, what supports and services are there for older adults. But my background cuts across age groups, and I know the Human Services Department cuts across age groups, and they do fabulous work, and Mike is a co-chair of the Human Services Committee, and he says, you know what? He says, I'd really like you to join us, and of course, I didn't want to turn down Mike, he's very persuasive. So this is why I'm here, and I'm looking forward to this new challenge on being on the committee.
Great. We got lucky to find you.
So much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Reed?
More of a comment. I think our demand and the scale of what you pointed out through your comments for growing mental health, senior services, housing needs, adapting and developing those effective programs is absolutely necessary, so instead of a question, it's more of a comment that we're lucky to have you applying for such a position and really look to your skillset that you bring here, because we're going to need a lot of help. Our reliance on grants and your grant experience is going to be most helpful. We're seeing, you know, threatened budget cuts and facility closures in the region. We're lucky that some of those are coming back, but I'm excited to have you on board.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Is that a motion, Mr. Reed?
Sure, I would like to make a motion to appoint Amy Loenberg to the Human Services Committee for a three-year term until June 30, 2028.
I'll second.
I'll take this one.
Second, Mr. Richardson. Any further discussions? Hearing was saying none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for stepping up. Okay, our next is Thomas Manchester for the Recreation Committee, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you care to tell us anything more, or anything other than in your application?
Sure. I grew up in Falmouth, moved away for a while to Sandwich, and moved back about five years ago. I live in North Falmouth with my wife. We have two daughters. Our oldest daughter is a teacher at Lawrence School. Her husband teaches at East Falmouth School. They just had babies, so that's the fifth generation of my family in town, and I've reached a point where I want to try to give back through areas that I believe I have some skill to offer to the town, and a lot of that skill came from my current job. I'm Vice President of Field Marketing at Planet Fitness. We have 2,800 clubs across the U.S. We construct training and programs for folks of all ages. Our motto is a judgment-free zone, where folks of all ages, all abilities, anybody can come to Planet Fitness and find what they want. Before that, I spent 20 years at Dunkin' Brands, which is the corporate office of Dunkin'. We had 8,000 stores in the U.S. at Dunkin', and was the Senior Vice President of Marketing there, did a lot around strategic planning, budget planning, project management, and event planning and execution, that I believe I can take some of those skills and offer to the Rec Committee. And in the brief time we lived in Sandwich, I also served as President of the Sandwich Soccer Club, which is about 360 youth that play. We built all the fields while I was President at the Water District off of Ace Lane, served as President of Sandwich Youth Soccer, which is 1,200 players, and was the Director of our Memorial Day Tournament, the Cape Cod Challenge, which was our fundraiser. We had about 200 teams. So just, again, at the point in my life where I'd really like to give back in areas that I believe I have something to offer.
Sounds like we're very lucky.
Yeah. Falmouth beat Sandwich again.
What's great is the past eight seasons, I am the volunteer coach for the girls' soccer team at Falmouth High School.
Oh, great.
So I am always happy now when we beat Sandwich.
Although I refereed a game this weekend, still a youth soccer referee. Sandwich won on penalties, grade five, some of the best penalty kicks I've ever seen in a game, fifth grade.
Well, make sure Falmouth High School works on their PKs. At least fifth grade.
I have one question, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious, obviously, fitness in your professional life, soccer in your avocational life, are there particular programs, activities that you would like to see the Recreation Committee delving into, expanding, building on here in Falmouth?
I'd say that the philosophy that has worked best for us is really making it accessible for everybody, and what I've found just through physical activity is it contributes to not only your physical well-being, but your mental well-being. So I don't have anything specific. I think I'm probably going to learn a lot the first few months and make some decisions and have some ideas after that.
Well, I would be happy to move appointment of Thomas Manchester to the Recreation Committee for a three-year term ending June 30, 2028.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I know, I should have.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on the agenda is committee reappointments for uncontested seats. Mr. Chairman and Select Board, unlike the regulatory boards, these non-regulatory boards do not require interviews for reappointments. Included in your packet this evening are a list of multiple boards and committee members who have also indicated, if not strong, an interest in reapplying for appointments. So it's my recommendation, Mr. Chairman and Select Board, that the Board consider the reappointment of those folks, board and committee members, with the term ending dates as shown in the list published with the agenda packet. I think that's the easiest, cleanest way of doing it.
Do we need to read them off?
I don't think we do, as posted and published in the agenda packet.
Okay, someone willing to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the reappointment of the various boards and committee members.
the reappointment of the various boards and committee members with the term ending dates as shown in the list published with this agenda packet. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I would just like to note, it's a long list of reappointments. A lot of names on that list of folks who give an immense amount of time and talent. Many of them volunteer in multiple different ways in our community. And so just a thank you to everyone on that list for their continued willingness to serve.
Second that, that's for sure.
Absolutely.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to our public hearing. And I'll ask Dr. Goldstone to read the, read the public notice.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that Falmouth Pier 37 Boathouse LLC, DBA Pier 37 Boathouse, has applied for an outdoor alcoholic beverages table service area alteration of premises to its seasonal all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license to be exercised at 88 Scranton Avenue, Falmouth, Massachusetts. A hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, June 16th, 2025, at 6:45 PM. Comments may be sent to selectboard@falmouthma.gov.
Thank you. Mr. Entrow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board, I believe, is aware, this is a new type of license application needed because in 2024, last year, the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, ABCC, of the Commonwealth ceased to review and approve alterations or changes to licensed premises that apply only to outdoor seating. Any changes to indoor seating will continue to be reviewed and approved by both the local licensing authority, the Select Board, and the ABCC. The applicant submitted the packet on May 22nd this year. A floor plan, which is included in your packet, dated April 22nd, 2024, and a site plan marked as B 22-42, dated June 12th, 2024, were approved by the Building Commissioner on May 7th of this year. And the town planner reviewed and approved on May 6th of this year. The plans were also approved by the Health Agent on May 6th, the Conservation Administrator on May 6th, and Fire Rescue Department reviewed and approved them as well. The floor plan included in your packet has been updated to include an outdoor host stand. And that was received on May 22nd by the Select Board Office. And the Building Commissioner advised that a second plan review was not necessary for this host stand. Again, the completed application has been reviewed by the Building, Health, Fire Rescue, Police, and Planning Departments. And staff have indicated no objections to approval. An updated food service establishment permit will be required to issue this license pending the outcome of the hearing if the board opts to grant the license.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Connor McLaughlin, General Manager, Pier 37 Boathouse. What we're asking for here is basically just the COVID seating area that we used over the last four years, that was permitted and used over the last four years to be, continue to use that going forward. There are no alterations made to the premises outside of the addition of a food truck, which I was lucky enough to purchase.
And the conditions that the town manager has mentioned are satisfactory to you, acceptable to you?
Yes. I mean, I don't, within the, I don't really understand what conditions.
Mr. Chairman, if I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
If I could, Mr. Chairman and Select Board, I was remiss. I did not, I did not read off those conditions. Staff, in reviewing the application, staff from the various departments have contributed. And so the applicant is aware, part of the town manager's office recommendation for approval tonight, following the public hearing. And I'll read off the following proposed conditions. That a host or security person be on duty during the hours between 6:00 PM through close each Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and all holidays, the second, from the second weekend in June through September. Service to 76 standing persons is restricted to the area shown on the approved floor plan in the main restaurant, which is indicated as the indoor bar area and exterior covered deck. It's my understanding that the floor plan that was submitted and approved calls out the specific 76 standing area for patrons inside the establishment. The total seating capacity of the licensed premises shall not exceed 400 seats at any time, including the outdoor patio. And the total number of patrons, including those standing in the approved areas, shall not exceed 476 at any time.
Just a question, Mr. McLaughlin. With respect to the first condition that Mr. Entrow mentioned, host or security, which would you be utilizing, do you think?
Security is there every single Friday, Saturday night. Sunday evenings, we typically will have a manager and host on. And on big events, or obviously road race, things like that, or anything of substantial crowd that we can plan for, we have security on. On Sunday evenings, we've never had a crowd necessary for, we don't have like DJs or late-night entertainment or anything like that on Sundays. So we've never had a, we don't typically have a security individual on, but we have a front of the house manager and a host on all the time, seven days.
Just to be clear, you also mentioned Friday night. That's.
Yes, yes, Friday. Friday and Saturday is guaranteed security every night. And then Sunday is just a little.
If I could, the language in here says Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and all holidays.
Right.
Holidays guaranteed as well.
Okay.
Sunday is the only thing that, you know, as you can imagine, if there's, sometimes we literally shut down at 8:30, nine o'clock at night. It gets cold, you know, in June and stuff like that. The one thing I'd like to point out from that plan that you can see conceptually how it makes sense. I put 400 seats and not tried to put 476 because of, we wanted the, I was trying to be okay with the amount, anybody standing or around the bars or being, you know, cooks in the building, staff. It's a full-capacity thing. So that was the intent of having, you know, because 476, 400 seats, 76. That 76 is technically also, you know, waitstaff and anybody in the building, you know. So that's, I was doing my best to make sure that we were always within the confines of that number, even if every seat was filled, that the people, you know, happened to be standing by the bar or a staff member on, we'd always be under that number. So just to give some insight into that.
Should we maybe consider adding just a tiny bit of language to say through close each Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, if Sunday has entertainment or something like that? Because will this, was it a problem for you to have to have somebody on there on Sunday?
We can have security on Sundays as well, if that's.
I think we'd like to see that be one of the conditions.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay.
If you can do that without too much difficulty, that would be.
We'd rather work to be busier than less busy. So we'll make it work.
Okay.
Question?
I have a question about the one modification that you mentioned, which is the addition of a food truck in the parking lot outside of the outdoor seating area. I guess that raises a little bit of a concern for me with folks potentially, is the idea they'd be coming and going from the outdoor seating area to the food truck and back. And if you've got an alcohol license in a bar out there, raises some concerns about the perimeter.
So actually, it is the perimeter. It's up against, the service window would be inside of the restaurant. It's for service only for inside of the restaurant. And it actually, where the wall comes in, actually, if I have a plan to show, we do have a plan here that shows. But basically, it'll only be accessible by people in the restaurant and serviced for the restaurant. It won't be, really have people from the outside getting food or have any place for them to.
Okay, thank you. I didn't understand that from the plan that was in our packet. So I appreciate that clarification.
And I'd be happy to bring the plan up if you think.
I think we have it here.
I think we're okay.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it faces the inside. It won't be accessible.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was my concern.
Okay. Is there any person in the audience that would like to speak to the application? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. With respect to the application, is there any discussion amongst the board with respect to the application?
No. I would say it seems fine. They just want to carry on what they've been doing. I would encourage all restaurant owners to come and get this update, get their seating squared away if they want to keep it.
No, I think a number of establishments that probably did it during COVID and don't realize that they may need to come before us and get approval. So just get that word out to the, to the community. And I agree. So there are motion with respect to the application.
I'm looking for the written motion.
Move approval of the application by Falmouth Pier 37 Boathouse LLC, DBA Pier 37 Boathouse, for an outdoor alcoholic beverages table service area at 88 Scranton Avenue, Falmouth, with the conditions recommended by the town manager's office.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Look, thanks.
Okay, we will move on to the business portion of our agenda. And the first matter is to discuss and consider an appropriate response to ongoing ICE activities in Falmouth. But before we do, I'd like to make a short statement. I think we are all in agreement that we understand that many residents in Falmouth are concerned about ICE activities. Many are fearful for their own safety and for the safety of their friends, neighbors, relatives, employees, coworkers, students. And we take that to be very serious. And as a result, we've asked Chief Laurie and Sheriff Buckley to be here this evening to give us a bit of an update. We are not going to take questions or comments at this time. I have asked the town manager to put into motion a plan to have a public meeting at some time in the very near future, where it would be more appropriate to have public comments and questions with respect to this very important, very important issue. I, for one, feel, as has been said many times, that silence is complicity. And I think that the purpose of our meeting tonight is to hear from the sheriff and Chief Laurie and to discuss amongst ourselves an appropriate response and how we want to express our concern and feelings with respect to this, to this issue. So with that said, I'd ask Chief Laurie to start us off.
So the police department position hasn't changed. We are not ICE agents. We don't participate in their operations, nor do we hinder them. They don't assist us with our issues. Anyone that follows us on social media, we had a barricaded subject for several hours. We took a couple of very dangerous guns off the street, someone that was intoxicated under the influence of drugs. We've had multiple missing persons. We've had several fatals. They don't help us with that. We take care of that. And I don't have the officers or the resources to deal with what we're dealing with right now on a daily basis. And with the summer kicking off, we're very busy. Last Friday, I had a chief's meeting in Chatham. The DEA and the FBI were there. They advised us to contact them when we have issues of not being notified. There have been some glitches. They try to notify us when they can. There are certain things that I can't talk about when it comes to sex assaults and it comes to domestic violence. But they've taken some very dangerous people that have been in our community that have committed some very, very heinous crimes, evil people, and they've come to Falmouth to take them away from here. Recently, we had an individual that was wanted for murder out of Brazil. You know, so in those situations, when the people are very violent and dangerous, they'll call us to let us know they're coming to town, maybe even a specific area, just because we want to protect you folks. We want to make sure that Falmouth is safe. That's our main function of the police department is to make sure the community is safe. So there are times they do notify us. But like I said, you know, some of the comments, some of the public has made to us recently, even today, down at the Steamship. One of my officers was down there, you know, referring to us as ICE officials. Where are your local law enforcement? We talked about at the summit, it's a Select Board summit. It was brought up about, you know, a twenty-something-year-old person from outside this country, you know, raping a fifteen-year-old young lady, victimizing these young ladies, hoping they don't report because they're not here legally. Our goal is to make sure that everyone that is in our community wants to approach us and tell us that they're a victim of a crime. And obviously, that person is wanted in that country. And if I know if I, if one of my family members was violently hurt and fled the country, I would hope that country would cooperate and assist us to bring that person back so they could be held to justice. So that's the only times really where we would be involved is I would send a couple of cruisers to the area just to make sure, we're looking for a murderer. And if something goes south, that local law enforcement is there to make sure that you folks are safe. And like I said, any specific questions that I've been asked, you know, I've answered. Our stance has not changed. I know Attorney O'Keefe would concur with me. Read the LUN decision, L-U-N-N. Read the LUN decision. We do not have federal powers. We do not hold people on ICE detainers. What we would do is, we would arrest an individual that had an active warrant for a crime, a violent crime. Their fingerprints are run. That's when the federal government is notified that this person that they're looking for is in our custody. And in most cases, we then will transport them to the sheriff's department. And when they call us, just like if you called us about your family member, we would say to them, yes, this person was arrested and they're now at the House of Correction. And the sheriff can explain, you know, what her next steps would be. And the sheriff can explain, you know, what her next steps would be. So I don't know if you have any specific questions for me? If...
I have one. Of course, I haven't heard of it happening here, but I've seen it on news and so forth, that sometimes the ICE agents don't want to answer any questions about who they are or give out any information.
You'd have to talk to ICE. So I have no involvement with ICE. I know there's a group in town that asks me specific questions and I refer them. You need to talk to the ICE officials. It's just not my lane.
No, I understand that, but my question was going to be, if a person sees a couple of masked people, maybe they might have a jacket that says police, but it doesn't mean it's real because the murderer that just attacked the people in Minnesota was dressed as a police person. I don't know where they got the outfit, but... So it just seems crazy that people could be abducted off the streets by people with masks on who are refusing to identify. If that, if a citizen sees that happening, can they call the Falmouth Police and say, we see this happening?
We would not get involved in that. We would not get involved in that unless there was some type of violence where the public is intervening. In many cases, a lot of these ICE officials, they're wearing masks to protect their identity because they and their families are being targeted and threatened. That's my understanding. But those are questions that you'd have to ask the ICE officials. The only way we would get involved, if there was some type of public disturbance or some type of issue, and then we would come to protect the folks in Falmouth. I can even share with you, we have an officer that's attached to DEA Task Force. He is not to participate in any ICE-related functions. He is a local law enforcement officer. He's doing great drug work, you know, in the Cape and Island community, but he does not participate, you know, and none of my officers do at all, period.
Have you received any calls related to Doug's question of people, you know, that are hypothetical?
I have not. I can research it when I go back to the station. But I can tell you from when I wake up in the morning until I can almost go to sleep at night, we're dealing with Falmouth issues. We really are. We're dealing with Falmouth issues. And where it comes into play is, you know, they're taking some very dangerous people. But then when you, they come into contact with, say, someone who's not dangerous, who happens to be affiliated with them, with them, then they're taken as well. And that's where the issue is, where I think people get very upset and they want to make sure people have due process. I understand that, but it's not my lane.
Mr. Chairman, if I could. So I appreciate Chief Lori being here tonight. We have done, the town has posted some important resource materials on the website and we're trying to distribute those because not everyone has access to the website throughout the community, using Human Services as kind of that outlet. Town Council was very kind to produce kind of a legal resource guide. And also, I wanted to bring to the board's attention again and to the communities that also included in this website resource library is a Attorney General guidance, Know Your Rights: ICE Enforcement, A Guide for Immigrants, Families, and Communities. It's got important contact information in that material. So if a question like that were to arise, I know Select Board Member Brown is referring to, is implying an incident on the street, real time. Clearly, that's not the time to make phone calls to inquire about identity. But in advance of that, I would encourage people in the community to make those contacts and calls and ask questions like that about identification perhaps, because as Chief Lori indicated, it's not, it's not Falmouth Police Department's lane. It's not their responsibility. Maintaining public order and public safety within the town of Falmouth is our responsibility.
I certainly understand and agree that. I'm just saying, it seems like we're almost setting the stage for these copycat abductions that could potentially become something that could be happening.
So, I mean, we're here. So if someone sees something that they're suspicious about, call us and we'll look into it. But like I said, you know, we're dealing with a host of different issues. I mean, we just had another stabbing last week. I mean, we're dealing with our own, you know, mental health crisis issues, you know, clinicians are out straight. So, you know, we'll be there, we'll help when we can, but that's just not, we're not going to be involved, we're not going to be participating in any ICE operations.
I was only suggesting that maybe, like, if you see something that doesn't look right, if they're refusing to ID, an officer maybe could just come and say, could you please just show me your identification?
Yes, see something, say something, and we'll look into it. Absolutely, that's why we're here.
That's all I was hoping for.
Along those lines, I'm also wondering, I know that residents in Minnesota over the weekend were instructed to call 911 to ensure that anyone appearing as a law enforcement officer was who they said they were. Would our 911 dispatchers know if there were immigration enforcement officers in the area to confirm that or no?
I would, I would say, I'll have to research that, I'm not sure. I know our desk officer is notified and then we'll notify the command member, but whether or not a dispatcher would know, you know, that, I don't know. So if someone saw some suspicion...
To be clear, the Minnesota incident didn't involve ICE questions whatsoever, so this is a different, a different question.
To your point, though, the Plymouth Select Board, and I'm sure you saw this put out, where there was no coordination and there was issues because it just, it just happened. Not coordination in the sense of you're assisting, but no notice whatsoever. And it led to a dangerous incident with people who just were not involved in Plymouth.
And that's why the FBI and the DEA officials that were at the police chief's meeting, we have a monthly meeting, said they're trying to be better. But just like anything else, I'm sure, overworked, understaffed, and sometimes things slip through the cracks, notifications slip through the cracks.
Trying to keep up with the quotas.
So, yeah, so they're trying. They're trying to notify us, and that's what we were told Friday. Most of the Cape Chiefs were at this meeting, the deputy chief and I attended, and we're going to try, we're going to try.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Chief, and, you know, thanks for doing such a wonderful job for the community. We all appreciate how hard you and your staff and all the police officers work and we...
Yeah, and on behalf of the Falmouth Police Department, we appreciate the opportunity. We're going to try to exceed your expectations and needs. Any questions, comments, concerns, I'm available, I'm here.
And we will have a more public discussion of this issue as we go forward, so thank you.
If you want me there, I'd be more than happy to attend.
Certainly would be invited, thank you. All right, Sheriff Buckley.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to come. The mere fact that we are having this conversation, I think suggests that there is a larger problem than just whether or not ICE is picking up criminals off the street. I want to start by saying that all of us in the law enforcement community have a responsibility to enforce the law. None of us wants to sit back if there are mechanisms in place to remove rapists, murderers, human traffickers, drug traffickers, and criminals from our community. But that's not what we're dealing with. We find ourselves today in a situation of misinformation, disinformation, lack of transparency, and chaos regarding the actions of federal agents in our communities. Part of the challenge is that we do not know what is happening. I think it might be helpful to sort of explain what the norm used to be and give some information so that we can all understand how far away we are from normal law enforcement activities. Prior to January of 2025, the ICE relationship in our community was primarily through the sheriff's office. And the way that that worked, before I became sheriff in '23, the way that that worked was there were deputized sheriff's office employees who were also ICE agents. They never left the facility. They did the work of ICE within the facility. And that primarily consisted of using ICE's own databases to write out what we call an immigration detainer if someone's citizenship status or residential status was in question. So we were essentially doing the paperwork work of ICE in our facility. There was much conversation about that relationship when I ran for sheriff, and my conversation with the community was, that's legitimate work, it's just not our work. And so we stopped doing that particular work in January of '23. Since January of 2025, our relationship with ICE looks like this. If someone is in our jail who has what's referred to as an ICE detainer, which are the civil warrants that ICE uses to bring someone in so that they can go through a process to determine whether or not they can continue to stay. So if someone is in our jail and they have an ICE detainer, the ICE detainer is lodged by ICE, they send it to us. We put it in the file, and whenever the person who has the ICE detainer is moved, we notify ICE that they are moving, unless they're going to another secure facility, in which case the detainer goes with them. So since January of 2025, there have been eight instances of persons in the custody of the sheriff's office who have had ICE detainers. Three, we notified ICE and they came and picked them up, and we cooperated and collaborated with them on how that would be accomplished, and they went through the Sallyport at the jail, and they went from our custody to ICE custody. Three, went to court. We notified ICE that they were leaving our custody. We transported them to court. The court determined whether or not they would stay in custody or be released. Those three circumstances, the court released the person and ICE was not there to pick them up. And the other two were transferred to other facilities. Since January of 2025, while we had those eight, we have released 730-plus individuals. Immigrants are not the source of our public safety issues in Barnstable County. We currently have nine people in the jail who have immigration detainers, and we will follow the same process. So why are we having this conversation about ICE? What started out as, or what appeared to be, a ramped-up investment by the federal government in making sure that ICE could detain all of those people across the country who had criminal charges, were found guilty, and were back in our community. And no one was arguing with that. But very shortly thereafter, it became something else. And now what we are seeing in our community is, we are not always notified, we are most frequently not notified if ICE is conducting activities in our community. We don't even know who they are. And they are stopping cars and interacting with people without reasonable suspicion, without due process, without probable cause. And they are changing the rules before the rules that we have all come to understand as the norms of our rights under the Constitution, before anyone has been given notice. So what we find ourselves here today is a situation where we have law enforcement entities whose responsibility it is to enforce the law are very close to circumstances where there are other law enforcement entities, our federal government, who are directing employees to behave in manner that is inconsistent with our law. So the question for this board is, what is the responsibility of our law enforcement officers? No one gets a pass if someone breaks the law, including if it is a federal law enforcement officer. They're held to the same standard as our citizens and our residents. But we are coming into conflict with that. There were circumstances just recently in Falmouth where someone was detained, many people have been detained, who had no criminal charges. And only with the information of bystanders are we able to even start to piece together what happens. There was a circumstance on the Vineyard where two American citizens, who also happen to be veterans of the Marine Corps, were detained for two hours in a traffic stop that doesn't even appear to have had a legitimate reason to happen, in a quest for ICE to get information about their coworkers so that they could pick them up. Out of the 1,500 arrests across the country during the month of May, less than half had criminal connections. So what happened to the other half? Out of the latest press release that ICE put out from the Department of Homeland Security, there were seven in Massachusetts that had criminal connections. Seven that they claimed were let free because of sanctuary status of Massachusetts. So let me just say, first of all, Barnstable was mentioned in that press release, and the information in that press release is false. The person that they said to inflame a circumstance, they said was released by the Barnstable County Sheriff's Office and we protected the person from ICE, was never in our custody ever. But that information is available to the free world. So from the law enforcement perspective, we are dealing with a circumstance where there is no transparency. I guess, let me just add this, we have gotten to the point of insanity when the latest effort to try to bring some, some sense to the situation is that the city of Boston is going to resort to Freedom of Information Act requests. That is not normal. It is not normal that our congressional delegation, every single one of them, has to send a letter to Homeland Security, and I encourage you to look at it, it just went out over the last few days. It has citations and as much details as we have about the circumstances that we are dealing with in Massachusetts, across Massachusetts. But we, our congressional delegation, has to send a letter to get information that is normally shared by cooperating law enforcement entities. This is not normal. And it is undermining our local police departments and all of us who employ public safety officers. It is undermining their effectiveness and credibility because, as you heard Chief Lori say, the public doesn't know who's who. And if we can't trust our local police department, if we can't know who has police authority, and then you add to that the fact that people are hiding in their homes, they're not reporting crimes, they're not actually even showing up at food banks, they're not able to live in our community because they don't understand what the rules are. And that is what creates chaos. And that is why we have a huge public safety issue, not just in Falmouth, not just in Barnstable County, but across our country. We all, I ask you to think internally to yourselves, have you had a second thought in your head about whether or not you should say something publicly about what's going on for fear of retribution? I know I have. That's not normal. That's not what our Constitution provides. And to have those comments when they're made met with threats is quite frankly unlawful. So I urge this board to consider this issue that we have with the tactics of Department of Homeland Security and ICE in the concept of what should be the case. Not just that today there's no headline. In other words, today, right now, we're sort of in a lull. But we actually need to go back and restore the status quo because otherwise, we run the risk of creating a circumstance where what went on here over the last couple of months was okay and was normal. I am happy to answer any more questions or any other questions that you may have. I think that consideration of the letter from our statewide delegation, the federal delegation, would be helpful for you because there are specific circumstances that are referenced in it. But I also think that we need local guidance. I know when my staff are on the street, there are questions about whether or not the tactics that they are seeing are legitimate. But we have a responsibility to uphold the law. We can't just sit back and let that continue. So at some point, there's going to be a clash. Or if there isn't a clash, then the rights of the people who are being treated illegally are not going to be protected. So we need guidance, we need to speak out, we need to understand that this situation is not normal. And think about the way forward, and I'm going to leave you with this. The way forward is the way that it has been since 1986. The answer to the situation with ICE is congressional action. We haven't had common sense immigration legislation since 1986. Both Democrats and Republicans have sat back and allowed people who have overstayed their visas to stay here, not just in hiding. They've given them tax ID numbers, they've given them business applications, they've given them driver's license, they've let them go to our schools. And I think all of those are great things on my own personal perspective, but at any point along the line, no one has said, you can't be here. Our immigrant community pays taxes, they work, they support our infrastructure. And we have a responsibility to them, who we have included in our economy, to make sure that there is a sensible path forward. So thank you for that.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
I just want to comment that I received a copy and I forwarded it to the town manager, maybe he can share it with the other board members, of a letter from Michael Dutton, the county administrator, to Kristi Noem protesting the fact that he understood that we were included on a list. Barnstable County was a sanctuary county. And he, in a very short letter, said, "We don't understand this designation and it doesn't make any sense. We are following all federal laws and we cooperate fully as required by law, and we like to know how this designation can be corrected." And I found that to be interesting, so just...
Well, so did I because it actually wasn't aimed at him, it was aimed at me. And we did push back. As a matter of fact, I mean, think about how diverse across the country sheriffs are. You know, there are truly, literally sheriffs in the United States who patrol on horseback and ride horses and have boots and hats and badges. I mean, that's not me. But the National Sheriffs Association, when that list of sanctuary cities, communities came out, I can share with you the letter that we sent. I'm the Massachusetts representative to the National Sheriffs Association on behalf of all of the sheriffs in Massachusetts. We had conversations with the White House, we had conversations up the line, there's very interesting communication glitches on that side of the equation. That letter was a surprise and an insult to sheriffs across the country, and it was filled with misinformation. So after some back and forth, the letter was pulled. The press release is still on the website, but the letter was pulled. But last week, the Department of Homeland Security came out with that list that I was just referring to of the seven or so people in Massachusetts who are out on the street because of our sanctuary policy. It's deliberate misinformation, it is political rhetoric, it is threatening public safety. It has nothing to do with public safety. So I'll share that with you if you'd like. I can email it to Mr. Renshaw afterwards and he can share it with the board. If you want, I can leave you a copy of the letter from the congressional delegation and you can share that.
That would be great.
Anyone else have any questions of the sheriff, Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, just to repeat what I said at the rally we both spoke at, to quote myself, I called you, quote, "one of the bravest American politicians we have today."
Just Jack.
Which, you know, it's intentional. The, I'm assuming why they left that press release up is they want to intimidate sheriffs from... from protecting the community, which is what you're doing, the government overreach, so I thank you. Beyond, you know, supporting the congressional letter, which we obviously would, at least I would, is there anything that, actions that you can think beyond what the town manager and his office is doing with getting resources out? Is there anything we can do to help support specifically our immigrant community here? That was a little out of your...
So I heard a statistic this morning, actually. Deliveries or appointments at a local food bank, not Falmouth, a local food bank, typically 160 in a day, was down to 100. I don't have a magic pen, I think information is key. I think not keeping quiet and suggesting that somehow what's happening around us is normal, I think that's key. And if you have neighbors that you can help without subjecting them to fearful situations, I think that's, right now, our sense of community, our sense of responsibility and connection with our neighbors, no matter who they are, is our best path forward. Because I, this isn't over.
Mr. Reed?
Actually, I think Jack hit on my two things. I was going to ask you what your main points were in regards to the public discussion, I think we just covered that. And I'd like to echo your thoughts about the community coming together to gather the resources necessary that we have all at our fingertips. This town has tremendous strength in its people. We do come together in times of emergency, and this is a time of emergency. And to gather those resources to help our friends in need is absolutely necessary. It's a generation in the making, you know, it's, you said, "Since 1986, we haven't changed our immigration." So there's a federal line that we have to, that we have to push for. But down here at the ground level of our community, I think we need to really figure out what our resources are that we can do to help our immigrant community here.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I'd like to see us send a letter of some kind to both comment on our support, if we do support the county administrator's letter, and protest the designation of Barnstable County as a sanctuary county. I don't know, did you say they already revoked that designation, or...
They did. And it was, again, it wasn't aimed at the county, it was aimed at the sheriffs across, there was all of the sheriffs, except one in Massachusetts that was mentioned.
But in this letter that the county administrator sent, he said that Barnstable County was designated.
I mean, you can ask him, but...
Yeah. And then also, I would like to remind them of whatever the letter of the law is, as far as notification of local authority, whether it's officially the sheriff's department, or the Falmouth Police Department, or whatever it is, I'd just like to, I think, remind them of what the proper procedures are, and we'd like to see that enforced.
So, so let me say to you, that hasn't been a law. It has been the professional way that we have coexisted for generations. It never needed to be scripted. It's a professional courtesy, when you go into someone else's jurisdiction, that you notify them.
Right.
I think here, today, the notification should go to our local police department, not to the sheriff's office. They notify us differently, because the people that we have are in custody. But if they're coming into this community, professionalism would dictate that they would notify the police department.
Point of, I thank you very much for coming this evening, and for sharing your experiences and your insights. I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you're ready for broader discussion on the issue amongst the board, or...
Yeah, I think the purpose that, on the agenda, was for us to discuss an appropriate response, how we want to, how we want to get our point across. But Sheriff, thank you very much for all you do. Thank you for coming here this evening. We truly appreciate it, and if we do have, or when we do have that community forum, we'd certainly appreciate if you would be able to attend.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, if you want to start off the discussion...
Sure, thank you. Yeah, again, thanks to Sheriff Buckley and Chief Lori for the work they do, day in, day out, and for being here this evening, and as Sheriff Buckley has alluded to, there is a lot in this issue that is beyond our purview. We are not here a body to deliberate on federal immigration policy. But our mission, as is stated on our website, is to create a welcoming environment for residents, businesses, and visitors. And both public safety and financial and economic stability are pillars of our strategic plan. And those are really what I think are at issue here. The ability of our residents to trust that their constitutional and civil rights will be upheld by all law enforcement officials in our community is really fundamental to that. And as the chief and the sheriff have already alluded to, what has been going on is undermining the trust and relationships that our local law enforcement have worked and work so hard to build. I frequently hear Chief Lori say, "We act as guardians first, warriors only when necessary." And I think we can tell from both Chief Lori and Sheriff Buckley's comments, that they understand that trust, not fear, is how we make our community safe. And so I think it's really important that we not only discuss potentially signing on to or supporting others' letters, but send a clear message about our expectations for the behavior of federal immigration enforcement officers when they are in our community. That our residents should all be able to expect, again, their constitutional and civil rights to be respected and upheld, that they should trust that they have freedom from unlawful discrimination, freedom from unreasonable search and seizure, freedom from self-incrimination, and access to due process under law. And, to Sheriff Buckley's point, I don't think we can make an accusation categorically that those things have not always been upheld, but we don't know what's been going on. And that uncertainty is creating a climate of fear that runs counter to our public safety and thriving as a community. So I think it's really important that we send that message. And also, as Member Brown has already alluded to, given events this past weekend in Minnesota, where someone impersonated a law enforcement official and ended up shooting, and in some cases, killing, multiple individuals, it's really important that we make clear our expectation that all law enforcement officers respond to requests for unambiguous identification and legal documentation for their actions. Furthermore, in terms of the resources that we've been sharing, I think doing as much as we can, and I know you already have been, in continuing those efforts to make sure that we get those resources in front of the people who need them most, which is not always through the channels that the town of Falmouth owns and operates, so thinking creatively about how we work with others in the community, to make sure those resources get to the people who need them. And the message along with that, that Town of Falmouth services are available to every resident of our town, regardless of their immigration status, and that their immigration status will not be requested in order for them to access services of the Town of Falmouth. That we will be as safe, as safe a space as we can be. And then, finally, I would advocate for this board to share our statement, or other communication, with our state and federal elected representatives, whose statements and actions to date have largely focused on Plymouth and the islands. And I understand that by numbers, there have been more reported incidents in those locations, but I think it's important that they understand Falmouth is also deeply affected, and needs their support and representation in this moment.
Yeah, I'll echo that.
I'm going to just say something before that.
Go ahead.
I was remiss in not acknowledging our town council here, who has been very helpful in gathering the information and getting it out to us and to the website. And I wanted to ask you, Ms. O'Keefe, if you wanted to add anything to the discussion we've had this evening, before we continue our discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you acknowledging me, although I don't seek that out, I'm really just here to support the discussion. This is, this has been a difficult, interesting time for everybody, and I just hope that we continue to find creative ways to continue to do what we're doing, and provide services, and keep the community safe and healthy.
So, Mr. Brown, do you have anything?
Well, I do, but I...
Yeah, the only thing I just, you know, going off Vice Chair Goldstone's point, is that there was a fantastic article in The Enterprise that I encourage people to read, by David Eisenberg, that highlighted some of the names of people in our community. And I, you know, like I mentioned, I spoke at a rally this weekend, and I read out those names, because it's, these are not criminals. These are, these are our neighbors, these are business owners, these are fathers. Just bringing up again, I was refereeing a soccer game, and one of the, I said, "Oh, where's this particular player's name?" He said, "Oh, because of ICE, he didn't feel safe coming." So this is affecting 15-year-olds. This is affecting everyone. To the Brazilian community, I always say, "Estamos aqui para você." You know, "We're here for you." I know it's an incredibly difficult time, and I just want to personally, as a member, unequivocally condemn the Trump administration's actions. I know we're not a political board, but this is purely political games being played by a hateful, bigoted administration that is meant to target and to put fear. This isn't about safety, this is about fear and about White's supremacist agenda. So I just want to make my points personally clear on that.
I will caution you that this is a nonpartisan board, and...
I am aware.
We really need to be careful in some of the statements we make with respect to issues such as that, but thank you. Mr. Reed?
I would just say that I'd like any letter that we create to highlight the economic
impact, as well as the public safety impact, because I spoke with a roofing supplier who delivers roofing here on Cape Cod, and he said that his numbers are down $900,000 in comparison to last year. The economy, the work is there, the permits are there, the buildings are waiting to be built, the houses are waiting to be done, but the workers are afraid to come to work. And I think I, if I'm correct about this, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe on the Martha's Vineyard raid, they raided randomly and pulled over cars, I don't know what the operation started out as, but I thought I read that only, out of the 40 people that they grabbed, only two actually had any kind of criminal relations. So, I don't understand it, and it seems like it's an assault on our workforce, which is, it's going to be a problem for this, this whole Cape region this summer, because all the people are afraid to come to work.
I agree that the economic fallout, tourism, you know, and our workers and contractors, this is a very important consideration, which I think any statement or letter we have should incorporate those points as well. Mr. Reed, would you like to say anything further?
I echo all of my colleagues' statements here. I'm concerned about ICE's actions, my belief that they're skirting the legal boundaries of due process. As Sheriff Buckley states, the systems of law are meant to provide safety and prevent chaos in our community, they're skirting those. But I'd also like to point out that Sheriff Buckley is very careful in her choice of words, and pointed out that immigration enforcement has become politicized, and that we don't have sensible immigration laws, that's at a very high level. I fully support our writing a letter to our federal representatives across Massachusetts, not just the ones that represent us, but all of Massachusetts, stating our concerns of the legalities of this skirting of the legal boundaries of due process. I agree that expectations of enforcement are also very important to put out there. And I'd go back to the community side. In the meantime, while we do this, I also support the idea of hosting an information session, so we can get more information out to the concerned citizens, to ourselves, and to those, so we can start, you know, kind of threading that needle between all the different folks, so that we can get the, the community to come together to support and gather the sustained resources, not just for this one time, but for the sustained resources for, in perpetuity, of what we need to help our immigrant population thrive and be safe. But I do want to make sure that whatever statements we put out there is not just an empty value signal that has no meaningful action, because then we're just adding noise, and we could potentially be poking bears. I'd rather us really think about the resources that we can do, and this is a really, really difficult circumstance. We're hearing that we are powerless in certain circumstances because of the challenges of federal law versus, and procedure versus the norms of today, or the norms of what was prior to today, accepted. So, I just challenge us as a community, as individual members, to think about those individuals that are not going to the food pantry, figuring out ways to get them the food, that are not going to soccer games, to get to them, to find out what their needs are. Because right now, statements are statements. They are not going to make our folks feel any safer with the threat of ICE. Our actions will make people feel safer by giving them the resources that they need. If they need a warm blanket, we bring a warm blanket. If they need warm food, we will bring them warm food. That's what's going to help us get through this.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, well then, it seems the consensus, Mr. Renshaw, is we'd like to work on a draft of a letter that incorporates, you know, what we've discussed here this evening, and maybe have it available for us at our next meeting on June 30?
Yes, sir. I'll work.
I mean, I think that we all agree that a letter to officials, we can figure out exactly which ones is what we want to do and make our point through that letter. Is that, is that the consensus of the members?
Yes, and if I could just comment one more thing, I'd like to comment that if it's going to go to these congressional leaders, we also want to remind them to do the work of getting this immigration system fixed, because it's such a long and tedious process. And in addition, you know, they go through this whole process, and once they've completed it, they have to go home to their home country and renounce their own citizenship before they come back. You know, in a lot of countries, like in Europe, you can have dual citizenship, US doesn't allow that. That's a very big, difficult boundary for people, because they have to give up their homeland, you know, they want to, I don't understand why, why we have to make it so difficult. So I'd like to remind them also, let's fix this.
And if there is anything we can do, and to Colin's point, you know, maybe talk about the next meeting, is there any actual things we can set in place to offer those resources that Colin mentioned, if there's anything substantive we can do too?
Well, there is a lot of information on the website. The Attorney General's guidance is very helpful in explaining the law, and what can and cannot be done, so... Mr. Renshaw, you have enough to...
Yes, sir, I believe it.
...have it something here?
I do. We'll have it ready for June 30th meeting.
Thank you very much, and again, thank you to the chief, and thank you to Sheriff Buckley.
Before we close this item, is there any kind of projected timeframe when we might have that public forum?
We're going to work on some dates and locations, and I would hope that at our next meeting, we'll be able to announce what, where we can have it and when.
Sure, so if it pleases the board, I'll work with the chair and vice chair to kind of select some dates and venues, and then make sure it works with everybody's calendar.
We want to get it out there, and I want to have, I particularly want to have a forum for people to be able to ask questions that are of concern to them, and try to get them the answers that they, that they need to, make them hopefully feel a little bit more safe and secure. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we are running a little behind schedule, so we're going to try and speed it up a little bit here. Our next matter is to discuss and consider a vote to authorize the town to apply for a municipal digital equity implementation program grant through the Massachusetts Broadband Institute. Mr. Renshaw, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last year, the Falmouth Municipal Light Board and the Town of Falmouth were co-applicants for a municipal digital equity plan grant that was made possible through funding from the Massachusetts Broadband Institute and the Massachusetts Technology Collaborative, or MasTech, under the Municipal Digital Equity Planning Program. Funding for the statewide program was provided through Massachusetts American Rescue Plan, I'm sorry, American Rescue Plan...
I'm sorry, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA State Fiscal Recovery Funds. Mr. Chair and Select Board, the Cape Cod Commission assisted the MLB and the town with the development of the plan, and a copy of, uh, the plan is included in your packets, and I hope everybody had a chance to review that. Um, a series of community and stakeholder meetings were held in December 2024, culminating in the finished digital equity plan, uh, around, uh, the middle to end of April of this year. Importantly, the plan identified that approximately 15%, and this is key to the discussion we're having tonight, um, approximately 15% of Falmouth's 14,596 households, or about 2,200 households, have multiple demographic barriers that are related to greater digital disadvantage. Um, examples include diversity, income, non-English speaking homes, veteran statuses, and age among the various, um, barriers. Upon completion of this digital equity plan, the Municipal Light Board and the town became eligible automatically to apply for a Municipal Digital Equity Implementation Program Grant, which is a program that was created to enable municipalities to mobilize or start up, um, and activate some of the elements of their digital equity plan and, uh, and, and, uh, put forth programs and projects that had a direct impact on the community. The Municipal Digital Equity Implementation Program provides access to one-time, uh, funding of up to $100,000 to a qualified municipality. Importantly, the grant is operated on a biannual reimbursement schedule. It's not unusual for grants like this to be reimbursable, but it's important, it's a kind of a biannual, every six-month reporting schedule at the six-month and 12-month period. Um, I wanted to outline the three broad program goals of this, uh, Digital Equity Implementation Program. Uh, first is to enable municipalities to make local digital equity investments that will again increase access, adoption practices, and usage of the internet for the populations that are most impacted by the pandemic and importantly, the digital divide, which persists today. Transition municipalities from the planning and implementation stage. The plan is great, but having that sit on someone's shelf is not ideal. So, it's meant to transition, uh, towns from the planning to implementation phase by providing that one-time funding to kickstart, uh, a community project. And lastly, to encourage collaboration and synergy with the Digital Equity Partnership Program, which includes statewide and regional grantees with high capacity for digital equity work. So, really creating a synergistic collaborative relationship between local municipalities and these regional, uh, resources. The Municipal Light Board contacted, uh, the Town Manager's Office with a recommendation that the town submit an application to the Municipal Digital Equity Implementation Program in the amount of $70,000 for the creation of a digital navigator, navigator program. Um, Mr. Peter Clark is here, as well as perhaps, I think, Mr. Eisenberg might be here as well. Thank you both gentlemen for, uh, joining. They can speak more articulately, articulately with regards to what a digital navigator program is, but I'll just hit high-level points. They've been successful all over the country. Uh, when I managed out in Colorado, we had a very successful program in the Denver metropolitan area. Um, basically provides a trusted guide who assists community members with ongoing, importantly, ongoing and individualized support for accessing affordable and appropriate connectivity devices, and importantly, those digital skills, um, that help close that digital divide. If awarded the grant, the MLB and the Town Manager's Office are proposing to generate a Request for Proposals, or RFP, to seek proposals from nonprofit groups in the community that would take on the day-to-day operation of the digital navigator program. And provided the first year of the program is successful, which we're confident it would be, it is our hope that, um, the, uh, successful bidder, uh, nonprofit group would be able to raise, fundraise additional funding to sustain the program well into the future. So, with that, um, Mr. Clark, I don't know if you wanted to kick things off and explain in, because again, I think Mr. Clark and Mr. Eisenberg can really, uh, do a better job than I did in explaining the potential impact of the digital equity pro, uh, digital navigator program.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here, and, and you've gotten a very good overview from the town manager, and you're short on time. So, uh, we can answer questions, David and I. We've had personal experiences working in a partnership with the school department to try to work with families on access and have had some firsthand experiences with how difficult it is, how many obstacles people who are in marginal economic conditions have. I think you all know how critical adequate access to the internet has become for job search, for training, for healthcare, for many, many things. So, not to have access is just a terrible blow in terms of daily living. Um, and we think that the digital navigator program is the way to reach out to people who need individualized help from a trusted person. We expect that this person would operate, um, not in just an office someplace, but would move to organizations that have referred people for help so that they're working with those individuals in known and comfortable locations. Um, and we hope that beyond just the help that's being given, that the digital navigator can train a small group of volunteers who can then work to sustain the process that's been started, that can, could work in, for instance, the Veterans Center is a place that, that would like to have someone. Um, the Service Center has been very open to recommending people. Various town departments, human services, senior center, library have all said they would be very interested in collaborating with this kind of service. So, David and I are also willing to help that nonprofit in search for funds. We're, we're very eager to see this, establish a pilot that shows that this kind of trusted person can reach out and with the help of other volunteers, really bridge the digital divide for people.
Thank you. Mr. Eisenberg, do you have anything to add? No?
No, I think that the town manager and, and Peter Clark have done an excellent job. Have to answer questions if there are any.
We'll go, yep, Mr. Brown?
I noticed you were asking for 70,000, but the limit is 100, and I wonder, is 70 really enough?
The, the minimum, Falmouth is eligible for 70, a minimum of 70 through this process for the Cape Cod Commission, and that can be hopefully, um, proposed to, to move up to a higher number. So, we would, we would be asking for more, I think, from the 70. We would try to be going for the, for the 100,000.
Is it our demographics that lead us to the 70s?
Well, the, the 70 is a kind of broad-based assignment to towns, and so I think the issue of going beyond that to 100 is based on the nature of the services you're trying to provide and the, and the, uh, the money that would be necessary to support those. So, I'm, I'm hopeful that this effort, which is somewhat more complex and more direct service than some of their proposals might be, just to buy hotspots or to, to start a course or to do, that this kind of program would draw that extra money.
Mr. Clark, what happens day one? What, what, what's the first thing that's going to happen once we go forward with this?
Oh, I think it, I would expect that it's going to take a number of weeks to get up to speed. Um, the organizations that apply may or may not have space. I think that it may be important for us, if, if, if an organization doesn't have an actual office here, that we find space. We would have to marshal, the, the person involved would have to start networking with the variety of town agencies and other nonprofits in town. So, there's that networking process that has to go on. Um, I think there are people who would be referred the first day by, by the Service Center and, and the Veterans Center and some other organizations, but whether the individual can be up and ready to deal with that. But it is a one-year program, and I think within, I would hope, a month of organizing, that we'd certainly be having some individual one-on-one help being given. Um, the training of volunteers and those kinds of things would come later in the process, I think.
Will there be ongoing support from the Cape Cod Commission during this process?
They've offered to provide support, not financial support, but, um, I think that they're very interested in this. As you may have seen, they devoted several pages in their report to this kind of, of service, and I think we have felt a, a good deal of support in, from them in making this, bringing this proposal forward. There are certain funds that have disappeared. We don't expect these funds to be brought, clawed back in any way, but there were certain other kinds of funds that might have helped a regional effort, and so searching for sustaining funds is more difficult under this administration than it might have been otherwise.
I, I think this is a great idea, so I'll start with that. Um, I'm curious, given that this is, you know, our one shot, this is one-time funding, and it's aimed at getting us to, to kind of larger implementation of a digital equity plan, I'm curious how much of the need you think this service can directly address and how it sets us up to address obstacles and aspects of the, the digital divide that, that a person providing training and support might not be able to, to address.
David, you want to answer that?
I mean, I mean, is the idea that this takes care of it, that we think, you know, a year or so into this, like, we've taken care of the digital divide, or how does this set us up for the, the next step?
Yeah. I think, I think you saw the estimate of 2,200 households that, that have not just one, but multiple kind of demographic challenges, and, and I think it's, it will take a sustained long-term effort to reach them and other people coming into town who might need this. And then there are additional activities that, that could be added on.
David, you go ahead.
I'd like to see a substantial part of the $70,000 allocated to, um, future planning and development. The word Kickstarter was raised by, um, uh, Town Manager Renshaw. I think that's really critical. Um, my initial vision was to, um, create a sustaining, ongoing program, and so, um, I would love to see some of this, uh, initial 70 or 100,000 dollars used to, uh, find more money, uh, from foundations, from private individuals perhaps, to, um, to really create a, a core capability that would go on into the future.
And is that something that a navigator can help us with? That this?
Yeah, yeah, so, so what I, I know we're behind, um, our time, but I want, this is important, and, and Mr. Eisenberg and Mr. Clark have referenced it. I think what makes a navigator program unique and, and, and potentially very successful and impactful here in Falmouth is that the navigator goes to the people. It doesn't, it doesn't rely on people coming to the, the library does a great job, you know, in, in terms of computer training, but the navigator goes to where the people are. Um, and again, that's the word, the importance of the trust relationship. Um, so, I think that's where this project is unique and perhaps has the greatest potential for success and impact, is because it goes to where the people are through the referral process. Either a human services, um, or some other agency makes referrals and actually the navigator is directed to the people to provide the service.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments, or else we can move to, uh, to a vote, a motion? Someone wants to make?
I think, uh, I think the parallels to the previous conversation are, uh, strong here in regards to a navigator. I think that's extremely important, therefore I'm prepared to make the motion to authorize the town to apply for the Municipal Digital, Digital Equity Implementation Program Grant through the Massachusetts Broadband Institute as presented.
Motion in a second?
I'd like to add it.
Discussion?
Do you think there's any, uh, chance we could get more than 70, or is there some reason why we're targeting the 70?
So, there, as Mr. Clark indicated, Peter, you want to take that? There is an opportunity for us to, if we can justify, um, I think the, uh, the, the funding agency would be amenable to, to applying for, for additional funds. Right now, the target is 70,000 based upon, we haven't scoped the project yet, that'll be the next step, is the scope in terms of the RFP. But Peter, do you have a?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the 70,000 is where we settled. I think we, we should be going for the 100,000.
So, then perhaps we want to modify our?
The number wasn't in the motion though, right?
It says as presented. Do we need to say a minimum of 70,000? Do we need to authorize more?
I, I don't believe so, because the, the purpose of the art, of the, uh, agenda item is to, is to seek select board approval. We'll bring back if we're successful in the award, which I think we will be, we'll come back to the board for acceptance of that award. Um, and as part of the scoping process, I don't think we need to list a specific amount. It's, it's up to 100,000 dollars. Right now, we're projecting 70, but it could, it could increase.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Thank you for bringing this forward.
Mr. Eisenberg, Mr. Clark, for all your work on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. The next item is to discuss and consider participating in the 2025 Massachusetts Housing and Climate Innovation Centers All-Star Internship Program. Mr. Renshaw?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate our friends with, uh, the HC, Massachusetts HCIC for, for being patient and waiting, uh, in the wings, so to speak. Mr. Chair and Select Board, the Massachusetts Housing and Climate Innovation Center, um, is relatively new, but has had a huge impact on the Cape. It's currently in its second year of operation, if I understand correctly, and, uh, in essence, it's an innovative program that places graduate and undergraduate students in direct collaboration with Cape Cod municipalities in order to identify local challenges and opportunities, which are at the intersection or nexus between climate resiliency and affordable housing. So, really thinking outside-the-box innovative approach, um, to addressing, uh, two huge needs that we have here, obviously, in Falmouth. Additional information on the program can be found, uh, for members of the public and the board. Um, we've listed the website, uh, address of the, of the HCIC. Um, the All-Star, All-Star Cohort Program runs for eight weeks from June 17th through August 9th of this year. Uh, the Director, Mr. Rob Brennan, who's here today to answer any specific questions, uh, recently reached out to the town, has had some discussions initially with our sustainability specialist, uh, Stephanie Madsen, um, and, um, proposes that two students be assigned to work with the town and that these students should focus on the following scope: ID of the specific challenges Falmouth faces in advancing both climate resilience and housing affordability; cataloging municipally-owned buildings, infrastructure, and natural resources that could serve as platforms for field testing of innovative solutions to some of these challenges; compose these findings into entries for the Mas HCIC Innovation Opportunity Atlas, which I'm going to ask Mr. Brennan or Adele to explain. Um, it's a GIS-based regional database that would be shared with shelter tech innovators from the academic, private sector, and government incubators. And lastly, to support the stipends of the participating students and their host families, the HCIC is requesting a contribution, should the board, uh, direct, uh, my office to proceed. They're requesting a contribution, a funding contribution of $5,000, uh, from each of the participating municipalities. And, Mr. Chair and Select Board, it's my recommendation that the Select Board consider approving moving forward with submitting application to the Mas HCIC All-Star Internship Program and to direct my office to submit application. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Brennan. Uh, Mr. Brennan, thank you again for being patient, um, in, in, in staying with us. Um, do you have any further comments you'd like to make?
No, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Select Board members, Mr. Renshaw. Um, it's a privilege to be here, uh, and, and I do have with me, uh, and I want to recognize our, our 2025, uh, All-Star Cohort. Um, they are as local as Hyannis and, and Cape Cod Community College, and they are as international as London and the Royal Holloway University. So, if I could ask, uh, Sarah, Jade, Sam, Forrest, and Halima to stand and, and just for your, uh, knowledge, uh, and then with me, with me is, uh, Adele Giovinello, who, uh, was a member of our 2024 All-Stars Cohort and is serving, uh, this summer, uh, as the program coordinator. Um, conscious of where we are in the agenda, and again, I thank Mr. Renshaw for doing an excellent job, um, in short, to describe Mas HCIC's mission and focus, uh, it's the understanding, uh, that all 15 municipalities, uh, on, on our arm going out into the North Atlantic, uh, have a vested interest and a unique crucible here, uh, at this intersection of, of housing and climate. Uh, we have pressures, uh, that are, uh, without parallel, uh, anywhere else in the country. What that also creates, uh, is the opportunity, uh, for proving ground for innovative solutions, uh, to address crime, climate resilience, um, uh, to develop in a less impactful way, moving toward net zero, uh, and to develop, uh, and meet our housing needs, uh, more affordably. Um, those needs and those innovations and things that can be proven here, uh, solutions that start off on a whiteboard, get modeled on a bench, and now need to make a leap into the field to prove up their efficacy. Proving up their efficacy here on Cape Cod is not just a solution for the challenges under our feet, but it's a solution that's impacting, uh, the Carolinas, uh, and the, uh, and Hawaii, and California, and globally. We are in so many ways the albatross proving grounds, and we are 90 minutes, uh, from Cambridge and Somerville, uh, and from the, the labs at MIT and Greentown Labs in Somerville, uh, and the engine in, in Kendall Square, uh, where innovators are in Kendall Square, where innovators are working on these solutions. So we are the opportunity, and working across all 15 towns, to be able to catalog those locations and those platforms that can serve as testing grounds for those materials, products, technologies, and models of development and construction. Move forward the ones that work towards commercialization, investment, and broader distribution, go back to the whiteboard for the ones that don't. The All-Star Program, what the Falmouth Commodores are to Major League Baseball, our All-Stars are to, in terms of Woods Hole, Woods Hole Oceanographic, Woodwell Climate Research, Marine Biological Lab, they are the rising stars. We had close to 100 applications, we selected our top five, and they're with you today. Adele can spend two minutes just telling you about the work that the cohort did last summer, working across five towns here on the Cape, and the outreach that's going on to bring those innovators, to bring the opportunities. Mr. Chair, you asked about the, or Mr. Renshaw, you asked about the Innovation Opportunity Atlas. It's working with the Cape Cod Commission to use their GIS backbone, to take those locations, those municipally-owned or controlled built environments, natural environments, and to build them out into a GIS database and to go out to those labs and those innovators to match the conditions that they are looking for, what they've designed their product for, where a match would be, you know, here on Cape Cod, so that they can come into, approach the municipalities, ask for your permission to test out, you know, their innovations in a matching municipal resource. And again, let me turn it over to Adele to describe the work that they did last summer.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I'll be brief, because we don't want to take too much of your time, but in 2024, our first All-Star Cohort ever cataloged over 300 assets, built natural and including low-lying roads across five municipalities in less than eight weeks. And in our first year, we've already had a partnership with Blue Planet Filtration. It's a startup that helps clean ponds and natural water resources that have cyanobacteria contamination. And in our first year, we had a partnership with Barnstable, and they're already currently testing their technology with Barnstable and have that partnership existing. So even, and this year, we plan on furthering our database, because we've mainly focused on cataloging and data collection, but we anticipate that now that we are a little bit less of a guinea pig cohort this year and a little more familiar with how we collect information, that we plan on, anticipate on getting more partnerships with the towns and the municipalities in terms of connecting them with direct innovators and furthering our database. But yeah, in the first year, we've already cataloged over 300 assets and have already gotten a partnership with a startup. So, great stuff going on.
And I just want to add, in addition to the cataloging work, each of the All-Stars is going to be working on an individual research project. Adele's already talking, has been speaking with Stephanie Madsen about advancing Falmouth's climate action plan. So we would be assigning two of the All-Stars to work directly with Falmouth. The contribution that we're asking of the $5,000, it goes towards their stipend, it goes towards the stipend of host families, much like the Cape Cod Baseball League, they're here for eight weeks staying with host families. The total for those two interns, the expenses are $12,400, and so we're asking our municipal partners across those two interns to contribute 5,000. But I also want to pick up on Mr. Richardson's endorsement of Sheriff Buckley, because what I can tell you is, in the 2024 cohort, one of our All-Stars worked directly with Sheriff Buckley's office. Not only is Sheriff Buckley, you know, protecting and defending the rights of the folks in the county, but the innovative program that she conceived of and our All-Star supported was to work with individuals while they were still guests of the county and going through a pre-apprentice training program, so that folks coming out of incarceration could have those training skills to get into apprenticeships in the trades and get to work on building the affordable and workforce housing that we have. So that program was one, yeah, that was designed and outlined, and Sheriff Buckley continues moving that forward. So it's been a pleasure, you know, working with her on several fronts, and of course, could not agree more with Mr. Richardson on that one.
So, Mr. Brennan, would we get a report at the end of the eight weeks and maybe come back before this board and tell us, you know, what you discovered, what you recommend?
Absolutely. So last summer, we shared all of our results and our progress with all our partners, including the Cape Cod Community College and our state representative.
State representative, state senator. It's also worth mentioning, last year, the White House heard about this program, and Lori Schuman from the White House zoomed in with our All-Star team. So the work that was being done in the communities was commuted up to Washington as well.
Certainly no two more issues of importance than coastal resilience and affordable housing to the town of Falmouth, so.
Mr. Chair, if I might, one question?
Sure.
First of all, I'm thrilled to see you here. I've been watching this initiative since it was an idea. Think it's really terrific to address two of our most pressing issues. I know there's been kind of varied communication. I'm glad we've actually got you here. I understand Stephanie Madsen's also going to be working with the cohort in some other ways. Recognizing that this program officially starts tomorrow, and we already have folks here, I'm just, I'm curious about kind of feasibility, and I'm also curious what the investment of staff time from the town of Falmouth is for the summer in launching into something like this at the last moment.
So this year was, you know, it was a little bit tumultuous. Based on the success of last summer, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development had actually put us in the slot, along with Cape Cod Community College, where we're based, for a very significant grant that was going to allow us to take the eight All-Stars that we had last year and close to double that. All of that funding was pulled back and cut, the grant program went away, so it required us to scale down and, you know, to approach our, you know, municipal partners for funding that we didn't think that we were going to have to be requesting. Within our cohort of five, we have two of our All-Stars that are uncommitted to municipality. Were Falmouth not to elect to go forward, we would be putting them on the cataloging process and continuing to work, you know, going out to innovators, you know, working more closely with places like Greentown Labs. So we absolutely do have two All-Stars who are raring to go, and would love to be working with Falmouth on that. So the timing on this, this first week, and it actually started today, but the first week was all going to be orientation. Lou Stern, Falmouth resident, works as one of our innovation coaches, so he started first introduction with them today, they'll be finishing up orientation, and really starting to go next week. Staff time is minimal. Basically, you know, pointing them in the direction, giving them, you know, the list of municipal assets, we found that in every town, all the five towns that we worked with last summer, they all had that roster of, whether it was through DPW or through the town manager's office, that these are the, this is what the town has in terms of natural environment, built environment, and they have, and then they would, you know, go, you know, approach the buildings or let folks know that they were coming, but all the work is going to be done, you know, independently. If there isn't another additional program or additional research project that the board or, you know, Stephanie or any other department, you know, working at this intersection of housing and climate would like one of the All-Stars to drill down deeper into, we're happy to take that on as well as an additional research project. Again, each of the five will have both their cataloging work and their independent research work.
All right. Does anyone prepare to make a motion?
I'll make a motion as the young person on the board. And just want to add that, you know, when we think about with affordability crisis, why people stay in Massachusetts, it's programs like this one, and I commend you for your work. And on that note, I will make a motion to approve moving forward with participation in the 2025 Massachusetts Housing and Climate Innovation Centers All-Star Internship Program and to direct the town manager's office to submit an application to Mass HCIC.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Timing is very good. We have a vulnerability assessment that's all ready to go for you, and housing production plan.
We have a rather detailed inventory of town-owned properties.
We do, we have a lot of stuff that's lined up nicely.
So we have a motion in a second, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
If they don't get jobs other places, come back and probably take a couple more.
Now they start their tour of Cape Cod ice cream is going to start right now.
Yeah.
You'll be going into town and hitting your best.
Don't miss Smitty's out in East Palm.
I would say Smitty's.
Absolutely.
Okay, discuss and consider a vote to approve the application by College Light Opera Company for a series of six special one-day alcoholic beverage licenses for a series of 30 days for the 57th season of the performances at High Field Theater, 58 High Field Drive. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The College Light Opera Company originally contracted with a Chapter 138, Section 12C caterer, a local caterer for these performances. However, Select Board Office recently was advised by the ABCC that Chapter 138, 12C licenses are restricted to events that are private and that any service of alcoholic beverages requires these special one-day licenses to be issued. Because these performances are open to the public and there's an admission charge, it's my understanding that the 12C caterers cannot be hired or retained for that service. The maximum number of special one-day licenses allowable for each applicant is annually is 30. The College Light Opera Company currently plans 45 performance date in their 2025 schedule. Opening night for the 2025 performances is tomorrow. Executive Director Mark Pearson is unable to attend, but another representative of the company is here tonight. Oh, you are? I'm sorry, Mark, okay. I have in my notes that, I have in my notes that Mark was not going to be able to join us.
Appreciate you being here.
I was the only one who could come.
Thank you for being here, Mark, we appreciate it. Food provided at performances to be prepackaged, no food service establishment permit is required for this particular operation. Mr. Chair and Select Board, the floor plan is the same floor plan that was approved recently on May 2nd by the Building Commissioner. Importantly, the application has been reviewed by Fire Rescue Department, Police Department, Health Department, and the Building Department, and no objections or concerns were raised by staff. TIP-certified bartenders are Maggie Abbott Rolls, Hannah Schlossberg, and Laurel Milano. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bennett.
Yes, sir. Do you have anything else to add to the discussion? You know, we appreciate that this was a bit of a surprise, and we appreciate how quickly you worked along with the town to get it on the right track, so.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Mr. Brown?
What are we going to do about the other 15 days, though? They have 45 shows and only 30 licenses.
Yeah, so unfortunately, because the limit is 30.
Unfortunately, those are going to be dry days.
Isn't there some way, I mean, this has been 57 years?
It's a state requirement. I don't think there's any way to waive it at this point. That's my understanding.
I think it's 45 shows in 30 days.
Is that right?
It's 45 performance dates.
I think you have 45 performances.
We have 56 performances, 45 days, because we have a two-show day.
Two shows, matinee.
Wednesday is a two-show day.
My math isn't great, sorry.
I think the 30, the 30 limit is set by the state, apparently.
It just seems crazy that there's no way to remedy that.
It's per person, so they could have another applicant from the same company for the other dates.
That is so dumb.
Did you know about that?
Phyllis suggested it, and that's what we're hoping to do next, once we open.
We'll see you.
Get through tomorrow.
Okay, good.
I echo the concerns of efficiency. He's now been here twice, and will be here a third time, so anything we can do as a board to help. But with that in mind, I'd like to make the motion to approve the application by College Light Opera Company for a series of six special one-day all-alcohol beverage licenses for 30 dates for the 57th season of performances at High Field Theater, 58 High Field Drive, Falmouth as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Okay, we have a discuss and consider a vote to approve an application by High Field Hall and Gardens located at 56 High Field Drive for 19 special one-day wine and beverage licenses. Again, Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quick, Ms. Tara Burke is here this evening to help me through the explanation, but very similar to the last applicant, we're caught in this convoluted ABCC requirement that prohibits these 12C caterers. In this case, there are 19 event dates that are scheduled at High Field Hall between June 19th and December 12th. There's note in my file that TIP certifications for Ms. Lisa Walker and Mr. David Harrison were provided with the applications. Mr. Harrison would be the primary bartender, Lisa Walker, another certified bartender, will provide backup. My understanding, and Tara, you can help me with this, is that similar to the last applicant, High Field Hall and Gardens is going to have to contract, identify, and find a caterer that can provide service to these public ticketed events. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to turn it over to Tara, and she can help answer any questions you might have.
Sure. So I was told that we could not have a caterer, which is a 12C. I do have a bartending service that is an LLC as well as a 12C license. He's insured, and I was told we can't use him any longer, so.
I thought that's what the paperwork said, too, isn't it?
That they had a 12C?
No, no, I mean, I thought that 12C was prohibited now for public events. I think that's what they said.
Yes, and I'm sorry, Tara, you were told by Phyllis that...
12C caterers are no longer available to cater public events.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes, I think that's, I'm sorry, it's getting late in the evening, I think that's what I said, similar to the last applicant.
That's what leads to the problem here tonight.
So that is the problem. So I have a bartending service that I feel is much more qualified. I am also TIP-certified, I did submit my application as well, but I'm not a bartender. I don't do that every day. And my team is fully insured, all TIP-certified, they do a great job, and I just don't understand why they are not the right person to manage this bar and why suddenly we are. And aside from that, the logistics of now having to grab, you know, go down to Martinetti, go to a wholesaler, and now start stocking our basement, which if you ever saw our basement, there's not a lot of room, and then all of that. We are a very small organization, and we pump through over 200 programs a year, not to mention the day-to-day activities. So it just compounds the issue, and we're not this huge concert venue. It's, you know, Sunday afternoon from, you know, 4:00 to 6:00. It's just, it's unsustainable.
Does seem kind of surprising.
Has anybody spoken to ABCC? Has anybody on the board talked to them about this and why?
Does seem like a step backwards, doesn't it?
Mark, can you speak as a state?
So it's a state statute, and it was recently interpreted by the ABCC to, for this rule, so that 12C caterers are simply not permitted to service members of the public. They can only be done, be used for private parties. And this was just issued on June 12th. It is a new rule. I agree, it makes no sense, but the ABCC is the entity that's in charge of interpreting these statutes.
Can we, I certainly think that maybe we want to go on record to someone to express our concern with what we've had to do in order to meet this new requirement, so whatever action we take tonight, but I think we'd like the town manager to maybe draft up some kind of a letter in consultation, maybe with town council, to express our concern with this recent interpretation.
It's impacted other communities as well, it's my understanding, obviously.
We could use these as a case in point, you know, it's a step backwards in the level of service and the functionality.
Well, same for that matter, for a nonprofit, to have their co-executive directors and director of development staffing the bar as opposed to the event is not terribly helpful for them either.
Right.
We really don't have much choice at this point.
No, for tonight, we don't, but...
We want to move on and grant them the application and...
I do have one.
Yes, please.
One addendum or amendment, I should say. The fundraiser on the first, I did apply for malt and wine, but the fundraiser on the first is actually full bar. That would have to be a full bar. I don't know if that makes a difference, but I just wanted to make that notation.
So it would be an all-alcoholic license? I think that would make a difference. Sorry, I wanted to throw this to you, but all the other dates are...
When is that applica, when is that event, Ms. Burke?
August 1st.
And that is...
If I have to reapply, I can do that.
So maybe we'll approve eight?
All of them?
Eighteen.
Whatever we have to approve, and then you come back for the full alcohol.
Is that correct, more of the all-alcoholic?
So, well, I, let me just figure out what's happening first, so that I can, I don't want her to have to come back if she doesn't have to.
Agree.
So one of the, one of the dates... So one of the, one of the dates, you wanna have it switched from a beer and wine to an all-alcohol?
Correct.
Is your organization a nonprofit?
Correct.
Then I think you can just make that change now. I'm not sure, having her come back and fill out another application, it doesn't actually change your analysis at all?
Right.
Yep.
It doesn't.
I, I would think that that would be fine to make that amendment in the moment.
Appreciate that.
So, so then I'll take stab at it. Move approval of the application by Highfield Hall and Gardens located at Fifty-Six Highfield Drive for eighteen special one-day wine and malt beverage licenses and an all-alcohol beverages license for the date of August first.
Second.
Okay, we have a-
Nicely done.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I hope we don't have to see you again for this.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
See you at the bar.
Thank you so much.
Okay, our next item is Consider Request from McGansett Stable LLC for a variance to sign code Section 184-11 non-conforming signs and Section 184-25 freestanding signs to update the existing sign at 412 North Falmouth Highway for the Daily Brew and a grant of license for the placement of this sign on a portion of town-owned land. Mr. Renshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The existing sign was being used by the previous owner, but has been determined to be non-conforming due to its size and its location. A portion of it is on-town property. The owner of the Daily Brew, Catherine Hickey, submitted a request for this variance to use the existing structure and adapt it by adding a wooden carving reading "The Daily Brew." Illustration of that carving is included in your packet. Importantly, the original lighting is to remain in place. Per the sign code 184-11, any change in ownership of the property or of the business requires that the sign conform in all aspects to this chapter, which is the reason this is being presented to you tonight. Based on the sign code, the allowable area of the freestanding sign is sixteen square feet. The proposed sign is sixty-three and a quarter square foot. As I mentioned earlier, a portion of the sign is half on the property at 412 North Falmouth Highway and half on town land. So included in your packet is a grant of license prepared by town council, which we're also asking the board to consider. Building Department's reviewed the variance request and supports this application, and it's my recommendation that the Select Board support and approve the variance as requested as well as the grants of license for the placement of the sign on that portion, which is town-owned.
Would the applicant like to say anything further?
I think Mr. mentioned, I just said it.
Okay, very good. Anyone have any questions? The one question I have is, was, was there ever a license before with respect to this sign that was on town-owned property? Do we know?
I would have to research that. I don't want to assume, so I would have to research whether-
But it was never an issue.
It was not an issue until the business sold, it was conveyed, and then it became the responsibility to, to apply again. But we'd have, we'd have to research to find out if there's a permit or variance request.
It's probably been there sixty years before we were paying attention to science.
I was gonna say, and I love that you can still see the echo of Silver Lounge behind Daily Brew. I love that. If, if there's no objection, I would move approval of the request for a sign variance, a variance to sign code Sections 184-11 non-conforming signs and 184-25 freestanding signs and the grant of license for the Daily Brew located at 412 North Falmouth Highway, as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Could I make a general comment about this? These folks have not only done an extremely nice job with an ode to the history of that place, but they're also bringing business to Falmouth, and we as Falmouth have made it very hard on them, spending lots of time and money trying to make this happen. And one of our strategic plans is organizational effectiveness and community engagement. As part of that, I'd like to see us perhaps figure out ways similar to the last board item, make things a little bit more efficient, so businesses that wanna operate in Falmouth may not have to spend months upon months and tens of thousands of hard-earned dollars just to get through to, to create a business in town that's already been excess, you know, successful just over the border, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing. That's a great business.
Okay, very good. Next item is to discuss and consider a vote to submit a letter in support of term limits for the Steamship Authority's Board of Governors. This was before us at our last meeting, and Mr. Renshaw?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yes, as you indicated, this was last heard by the board on June third. The board opted to postpone the decision to kind of have an opportunity to review the letter. Part of the discussion that was had on June third involved a recommended edits. You have a, a called a redline copy of the draft letter, the second paragraph. The, the term best practice was inserted. I believe it was Vice Chairman Goldstone that asked for the best practice reference. The Falmouth Select Board views the establishment of a term limitation upon the Steamship Authority Board of Governors as proposed, and the Senate Bill 2395 is a best practice and a means of providing a balance of both longevity and institutional knowledge. So that language was inserted. But otherwise, Mr. Chair and Select Board, the, the draft that's included in your packet is the same that was presented on June third.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments with respect to the draft letter?
I just still have to abstain because it involves my boss.
Yes. Okay. Anyone else?
So this copy we have on our desk is slightly tweaked.
That's the next one, I believe.
That's the next one.
Next item.
Oh, sorry.
This is the one that's in our packet that essentially was what we had looked at.
Oh, the term limits.
Yes, fine, with the term limits.
Got it.
Is there anyone would like to discuss it in the audience? No? Okay, then we'll take a motion.
Motion to approve the submittal of a letter in support of term limits for the Steamship Authority's Board of Governors.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
With Mr. Richardson abstaining. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you for that.
The next matter is to discuss and consider reaffirming the Select Board opposition to the Steamship Authority's continued use of a 5:30 a.m. ferry service. There is a draft or a, a proposed draft on your places here, which differs in some respects from the draft that was contained in the packet, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Renshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the last board meeting on June third, we, we had a discussion, the board had a discussion in regards to continuing its, its opposition through a communicate, opposition of the 5:30 a.m. freight ferry service through a letter. Historical reference, June eighth of 2023, Select Board submitted a letter to the Steamship Authority, a copy of that letter is included in the packet. The consensus of the board was that we wanted more detail included in this version of the letter that was gonna be sent to the Steamship Authority Chair. I reached out following the June third meeting, and I wanna thank members of the Smart Citizens Task Force for their work in drafting the letter, which is included in your packet. It's a great job, provides a lot of very specific detail. I had some discussions with Chairman Muscally, and I have a, a second draft on your da, on your tables that incorporates some of the detail, but talks specifically about a future letter being generated after some continued discussion. It's important, everybody knows from the last meeting, this is time-sensitive, because as I understand it, the Steamship Authority has this hearing process open and can close it at any time, and I believe they meet next tomorrow, so it's important that we get this on record and sent off. So importantly, the message tonight is that even though the letter that I'm recommending, the draft letter that's included on your tables, is a bit shorter, I think it hits all the topics that the Smart Citizens Task Force graciously, graciously provided, and then puts the Steamship Authority on notice that the Select Board is gonna continue its strong opposition to the 5:30 a.m. freight service and will generate an additional letter in a, in a, in a later date.
And, and I do appreciate your, your redrafting of the letter at, at my suggestion. I think the letter captures all that we want to say at this point. We do wanna go on record as, as opposing the 5:30 freight ferry, and I do believe that we want to follow this up with a more detailed letter. It's a significant issue in town. I felt that, you know, that, that the initial draft was something that we would all wanna take a look at and probably had some questions, edits, concerns, and so forth, and I didn't want to delay us getting a letter out tonight or tomorrow to, to, to the authority to, to reaffirm our, our opposition with a goal towards, you know, taking a look at the draft that is in our packet, thanks in, 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 in some part to the people at the Smart Group, to help us focus on what our concerns are with respect to the 5:30 ferry and, and overall the, the relationship that we have with the Steamship Authority. So if there is any further discussion with respect to the current draft that Mr. Renshaw has given us tonight, if not, I'll accept a, a motion. Yes?
I, well, so I had also, of-
Well, with respect to the original draft that, that is in our packet, I suggest that you forward any comments or questions you have.
No, so, you know, I guess I, I, I agree that my, my instinct was also to tighten the initial draft, especially to maintain focus solely on the issue of the 5:30 a.m. ferry and not bring other issues with the authority into this particular letter. There are a couple of details in that initial draft that feel like they, uh, do contribute to demonstrating a, a continued pattern of disregard and an escalation of impacts that I might like to see included, and I'm, I'm curious if there were specific concerns with any of these, these bullet points that were included. I'm thinking, you know, the fact that there was an initial statement that it would be discontinued if operations caused problems, that the size of the freight ferry at 5:30 a.m. has been enlarged, and that there is video evidence of vehicles arriving prior to 5:10 a.m. are, are all demonstrations of, of violations of trust specific to this issue that feel like they would strengthen the case, in my mind.
My, my only concern is, I mean, we can certainly take a look at your, your edits if you wanna send them to Mr. Renshaw, and we can take a look at them tomorrow and see if we can get, get the letter out, if the rest of the members are, are okay with that.
My only concern is that they meet at 10 a.m. on Nantucket tomorrow, and I would like, you know, Peter Jeffries to have a copy and his hand up the letter to give them.
That certainly, that's, that was my, my purpose in going with this current draft. I don't, I, I don't disagree with any of the comments that Vice Chair Goldstone has made, but I, I would prefer to just go with this draft as we have it and work on those other points to, to, to make our, our overall position known to the authority.
Well, I think Ms. Goldstone makes good points about these details. I do, I do think they add strength to the, the letter, although the tone of this letter is a little more critical, and I know that this is a, a more, maybe a little bit more professional format, but yet these are some, some points that are important.
Well, you know, I, I, I think that, that the initial draft or the draft that's in your packet raises a lot of questions and concerns about our overall relationship with the authority, broken promises and, and so forth. But as Mr. Richardson points out, and which was my concern, was that we make sure we get something that we all agree upon to Mr. Jeffrey or out to the authority, so that in the event that there's a decision to close the hearing, they will at least have that. It is my understanding that, that in the past, the authority has allowed further comments even after the closure of the meeting. I think that's what Mr. DeWitt told me th, this morning, so, you know, we can, we can sit here and, and go over some edits for the, for the letter, but I think that, you know, that, that I support the current draft and would like to just get, get that taken care of and, and work on a, on, on, on a further letter to, to make all of those points maybe available at our, at our next meeting. You know, as, as I've said in, you know, in other occasions, I think it is on, you know, it's sometimes we're given these letters and they're very important considerations and very important issues that we face, and, and it's always a good oper, it's always a good idea to have some time to reflect and take a look at those letters and, you know, rather than having to deal with that particular draft at, at that particular meeting. That's the way I felt we would approach this particular issue with the time constraint that, that we have.
Maybe rather than just going with this, can we look at this and identify a couple of things that you might like to remove that are-
Could I suggest a different course, recognizing that I'm pushing the issue a little here? I would be happy to read into the record here a suggested amendment, an insertion into the most recent draft. If we all agree on that, we can go with that. If we don't all agree on that, we can move forward with this, because I agree that something has to be approved tonight and has to go.
I'm personally okay with that.
Yeah, I'd like to hear that.
So, second paragraph reads sleep, toward the end, "Sleep deprivation is well established as a public health risk factor." New paragraph. A Martha's Vineyard board member in 2011 stated that the 5:30 a.m. ferry experiment would be discontinued, quote, "if the authority's operations begin to cause problems at that time of the morning." Not only has the 5:30 a.m. ferry been causing problems, the impacts have only increased as the Steamship Authority has placed at least one larger freight ferry on the 5:30 a.m. schedule. Furthermore, the authority promised not to allow trucks to enter the Steamship Authority property before 5:10 a.m., yet video recordings show trucks regularly arriving at Woods Hole Terminal prior to 5 a.m. and as early as 4:30 a.m. Through its continued use of the 5:30 a.m. freight service, the authority is negatively impacting public health and safety."
That's it.
Letter continues as, as written.
As long as Mr. Renshaw will be awarded a copy of your, your letter.
Absolutely.
Those edits certainly sound okay with me.
Yeah, I like that.
I was taking notes, but this would be helpful. Okay, thank you.
We can talk that after as well.
And we'll have this put together in advance at the 10 a.m. and over to Mr. Jeffrey.
I'll sign it tomorrow when I see you in the morning. Okay. So at this point, we would like a motion with respect to the letter as amended by Vice Chair Goldstone.
I move approval of the letter as amended by Vice Chair Goldstone.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so here we go. Thank you.
Thank you guys for your advocacy.
Okay, we're gonna discuss and consider the approval of the letter of support for the Resilient Woods Hole Stony Beach Dune Restoration Community Flood Pathway Coastal Zone Management FY26 Grant Application. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As many of you know, Resilient Woods Hole is a collaboration between three major science institutions in Woods Hole and key local stakeholders, including businesses, residential, and the science communities, and the town of Falmouth. Myself, I sit on the Resilience Wood Hole, Woods Hole Steering Committee, and a couple other department heads sit on that steering committee as well. The Woods Hole Group is currently working with Resilient Woods Hole to prepare a coastal zone management FY26 Stony Beach Dune Restoration Community Flood Pathway Grant Application. Large portions, as we all know, large portions of Woods Hole are extremely vulnerable to flooding and is increased, as is increasingly important that the town work closely with Resilience Wood Hole to advance and implement measures that build resiliency to rising sea levels and the increased intensity and frequency of coastal storm events. The CZM grant application is for funding associated with the design and permitting of a dune restoration project at Stony Beach that we believe will enhance resiliency in this area. Mr. Chair and Board, it's my recommendation, Select Board, approve the attached letter of support for the Resilient Woods Hole Stony Beach Dune Restoration Community Flood Pathway Coastal Zone Management FY26 Grant Application as presented, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Any?
Nope.
Super quick one.
Yeah.
Is there, I'm assuming, still a path through to, to Stony Beach from the parking lot?
That-
Is beach access somehow maintained with the dune construction?
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, the several-foot berm, the entry pathway right in the center.
Excellent.
Thank you for that.
Excellent.
Sounds cool.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, is someone prepared to make a motion? Mr. Richardson, looks like you're getting ready.
I got it. Trying to get in front of me.
I got it here. Motion to approve the letter of support for Resilient Woods Hole Stony Beach Dune Restoration Community Flood Pathway Coastal Zone Management FY26 Grant Application as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, very good. Okay, we have the consent agenda, which I will go through. If anyone wants to hold an application, please let me know. The first is, consider a vote to approve the application by the Woods Hole Historical Museum at 579 Woods Hole Road, Woods Hole for a special one-day wine and malt beverage license to be held on August 21st, 2025. Number two, consider approval of the 2025 A-B-C-C seasonal license renewal certification. Number three, consider a vote to approve a grant of license to Woods Hole Road LLC for the installation of the Foundation Group Recovery Center's freestanding side, quote, "Foundations at the Miller House," end quote, on town property at 165 Woods Hole Road, Falmouth. Administered of orders, one, consider a vote to approve a variance of sign code 184-32 off-premises signs for placement of Cub Scout PAC 41 promotional signs from Sunday 8/24/25 to Sunday 9/21/25. Number two, consider a vote to approve the petition by N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, and Verizon New England Inc. for permission to install two new JO poles to be locate, to be labeled 25 dash, 25 slash 41.5 approximately 50 feet west of existing pole 25 slash 42 and 25 slash 42.5 approximately 25 feet west of existing pole 25 slash 43, and to relocate existing JO pole 25 slash 42 approximately 20 feet west of its existing location. These poles, these pole locations are necessary to provide electric service to 556 Main Street. With no holds, I'll entertain a motion to move the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to a review and consider a vote to approve the minutes of meetings, public sessions, November 14th, 2022, and August 7th, 2023. I took a review, I didn't see anything.
I hadn't really actually read them, but they're so old. Does it really matter? Let's just get rid of it.
You want to hold it until, until you have time?
Not really. I'm looking at them right now.
Okay.
Nothing here really important.
All right, so is anyone prepared to make a motion to approve those?
I move approval of those two sets of minutes as drafted.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, vote, all in favor? We have a motion and a, and a second. It's nine o'clock at night. Approved, okay. Mr. Renshaw, for your supplemental report.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'll be really brief. I'm going to pass around a photograph. This update was prepared for me to give to you from our town planner, Mr. Jett Kornak, and it's in regards to the project status of the Chivwix Pond Trail Project. If you all don't know, I think you all do, it's an effort to improve public access to the freshwater pond, a huge tremendous asset jewel really in the community. It's located within walking distance of the downtown area. Originally kind of envisioned and developed the project back in 2016 by the Environmental Baseline Study for Chivwix Pond. It was commissioned by the Falmouth Conservation Commission. That report identified three very distinct kind of program elements for this trail project. The first is vista clearing, clearing of existing vegetation at the southern portion of the pond, access to the park, developing a small park at the west side of the pond approximate to the viewing and fishing platform as designed, and lastly, viewing and fishing, the construction of a viewing and fishing platform. With regards to vista clearing, these are the updates. Lewis Tree, the contractor, completed this work a few years ago. That was the first phase. Access to the park, I want to thank the Department of Public Works, specifically the Parks and Trees Division, for clearing the land and planting over 400 trees. Some of us attended that kind of ribbon-cutting ceremony on Arbor Day of last year. Since that time, the park superintendent, Jeremiah Pearson, and others have completed work on the pollinator garden, the internal walkways, and the installation of two benches, with two more benches being installed later, and one fully accessible picnic table. Additionally, some Lawrence School students, with the help from their engineering teacher, built an informational kiosk that now displays the history of the pond, important ongoing initiatives, and photo summaries of the work completed on the park. And lastly, with regards to viewing and fishing, fishing platform, a cop, a photo of passing around. After receiving additional CPC funds at the November 2024 town meeting, the Engineering Division of DPW procured the project and eventually constructed with the help of Robert B. O.R. Company to build the platform and construct a fully accessible walkway connecting the new structure to the existing sidewalk on Catherine Lee Bates. On June of this year, on June 6th of this year, the contractor completed all the work involving the structure, and as of this time, has begun work on the connecting walkway. So we're, we're happy to report that the project, the long-waited project is nearing completion, and we're hoping to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony very soon. And again, this is a very example of a really collaborative project that wouldn't have been possible without the support and assistance of Select Board, Town Meeting, CPC, and a lot of great volunteers.
Wonderful.
Nice.
Okay, any Select Board reports at this time?
I can give two quick ones. You were at one as well, but the housing forum that was held was very informative and talked about zoning recommendations for densifying in areas where it makes sense. Very informative, very interesting, and one that I'm glad I participated in because it does pertain to housing and wastewater and, you know, our workforce. So, very informative. I believe it was recorded and you can catch it on Falmouth Community Television. Additionally, I was at the YMCA opening, or?
Event they opened house they had.
Event that they had, it was great. It was unfortunately not attended well because it was in the middle of various protests and gatherings, as well as rain.
Saturday in Massachusetts.
And Saturday in Massachusetts, but those that did attend had a nice time, and I would say that it's a, it's a great step in a right, in a great direction for the Y.
I think the need to shuttle might have also inhibited attendance. I was going to go, but I had a lot of things to do, and I realized that I would have had to go to the high school and park and get the bus, and I was just like, I.
They had not only a bus, but they had two cars on loan from Atlantic Subaru.
Yeah.
And they were just running constant circles. So, I took the, I took the chance and was rewarded, so it was good.
Good, well, glad you went.
Mr. Brown, any reports?
I can report that the short-term rentals committee is going to start on June 26th, Thursday night at 6:00. Looking forward to that.
And, you know, I certainly appreciate changing the time to, to get some more community participation and engagement.
Yeah, we did the first one like that because it was, you know, staff involvement, but now it's committee charge, so.
Okay, very good.
I've been mixing business and pleasure. I attended a fabulous Falmouth High School graduation a week and a half ago. Congratulations to, to all the graduates and the pride celebration last week, so.
So I was at the graduation, and, and it was very impressive. Dr. Goldstone's son was also one of the, one of the graduates. And I also, I also attended the pride celebration and, and the, and the forum that Mr. Reed mentioned. So with respect to future agenda.
I'll just add a couple.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we're good, we're good. I attended, I didn't attend the event on Saturday, but I attended the Y's board meeting on Thursday, which was great to sit with them. The fundraising efforts they've done are tremendous, and they're almost there to their goal, so I commend them for how hard they've worked and their team. JP Richardson, not related, but shouts out to him, and I mean, Miskul for all the work they've put in. And then I also attended, in my day job capacity, Mast dot has been having quarterly stakeholder forums at Mast Maritime and gave an update on the work they've been doing on the Bridges Project. But also, it was literally the day after the accident at Upper Cape Tech, which I know Falmouth has a lot of students at, where a police officer was hit conducting traffic in front of the crosswalk on Sandwich Road there. And they have, they have finally, they're putting up a speed light in the short term and are working on getting permits in place to do sidewalks and hopefully a stoplight. So I, I'm, it's been a long, long time asking for this. It's a shame I'd had to take it to this, but I'm glad they're making those steps. And that's all I got.
We are lucky that you wear two hats, Mr. Richardson, and you keep us well informed on what's going on on the state and local level, yes.
One more thing I could have reported on is I did attend a conference that was on leveraging infrastructure funds, and there's a program now, Massachusetts has a new program. I forgot my notes at home, I'm sorry, I was going to tell you more about it, but apparently if you can leverage any federal funds, the state now has a match program where it's a, a new source of funds because I guess it's, it's meant to offset the shrinking federal funds, so if you can get a small amount of federal funds, whereas you might have been hoping for a larger amount previously, the state will step up and, and match that or enhance it, but you have to have some kind of starter funds, and it's applicable to coastal resiliency and also infrastructure, like the sewer planning. I was mentioning how in our sewer planning, we've got this really very affordable sewer plan that we did in Maravista, and now the next one is three or four times the cost, and it would be great to find some kind of way to offset that. And the, the folks were saying actually that if we could find a way to get some federal dollars to initiate some kind of cost reduction in that project, the state funds would certainly be applicable to that. And also, I don't know if you can get federal funding for beach nourishment, but the Surf Drive Project also seemed to fit the bill. I did ask those two specific examples, and they said they both would likely fit the, the application if we can get some federal funds. It's all based on leveraging federal funds first, so that's the challenge.
Thank you. No, so I've each, asked each of you to submit future agenda items or items that you were concerned with. I have passed those on to, to Mr. Renshaw, and we will be getting them onto the agenda and, and, and as we go forward. The two, the two things I wanted to address tonight is we are planning to have a strategic session in August, and I'm looking at the date of August 2nd. I know it's, you know, I think you can make that, you would.
I have a family reunion that day, but.
Okay, was that, that, okay, I.
Yeah, the second and the night.
So, I, I, you know, my note here says August 2nd is not good, actually. So, it would be August 9th, August 16th, or August 23rd if we do it on a Saturday. I know you're away at some point, Mr. Richardson.
I'm, if Zoom is allowed, I can Zoom in from the country of Japan, but.
I think we'd like to have your attendance.
Yeah, I, I can do, I leave the 6th and I return the 24th.
I'm afraid that I'm unavailable after that in the month, so.
Traditionally, it's held in August, but can we push to September?
Can we look in July or look at September?
We can certainly look into July.
July, July's good for me.
Mr. Renshaw, you think we could pull something together for July or?
Do you have, do you have a, a, a date? It's going to be a, are we looking at a Saturday?
Looking at a Saturday, probably, you know, 8:30 to, you know, 1:00 anyway. I mean, we could go into September if, if we have to. I mean, I want it to be, you know, effective and efficient and not waste anyone's time.
The only caveat is that I, I have vacation planned on, from, from the 11th through the 17th.
Of July.
Of July.
I'd recommend we push to September, gives us a chance to, for some of us new, have more footing, but then we can also give you the proper time because we were talking about having a consultant. So, meeting that person on board and trained would probably make the July a little bit harder, having done this for my other jobs. So pushing to September, I think, would be good.
All right, let's try and lock down a date at our next meeting.
All of, September is all clear for me on Saturdays.
Yeah, I don't have any Saturdays booked yet either.
Okay.
The only one I have booked is the 27th, that's the last one, other than that.
Maybe September 6th is something we'll look at.
Yeah, sounds good.
Lock that down.
I will say the 6th is often busy, that's also the triathlon. I think, oh no, that's, no, never mind, sorry.
I think the triathlons are a little earlier.
Yep, no, that's the Hyannis Tri, not the, the one in Falmouth is in June.
I'm not running.
I was just going to say, it's not going to.
Horse racing, horse biking.
And the other, the other meeting that I want to try and get on the, on the agenda as well is a, is a joint meeting with the planning board. You know, the charter does say that we are to meet with the planning board, I think, twice a year, and I met this morning or this afternoon with the chair, the new chair of the planning board, John Drooly, and told him that we would like to schedule a meeting, a joint meeting, and I'm going to ask Mr. Renshaw to try to put that into, into effect as soon as possible. Certainly, with respect to what we heard at the housing forum and some of the new, new provisions in the governor's affordable housing bill, I think it is imperative that we meet with the planning board and start talking about some changes we might want to entertain with respect to, to zoning. And at our next meeting, if you all can just take a look again at the committee assignments and, you know, list out what, what you'd like to be on, what committees you would like to be on, or, I'm sorry, to be liaison to, we'll try and maybe get that locked down as well.
Point of clarity, is this, are we just filling in the ones that are now vacant by the other two, or are we starting?
I'd like everyone to take a look at it brand new and, and see, you know, see what of, what's of interest, if there's a, if there's a, you know, dispute or, you know, two people wanted the same committee. I think the handbook talks that seniority has preference, we'd have to try and figure out which one of you would be senior, so. Well, just take a look at it and let's, let's see if we can lock that down.
I like my committee.
Well, then, then that's what you want to be on, that's, that's fine. Believe it or not, we're only, we're only 10 minutes away from, from what our schedule was. There are a lot of papers, I'm going to ask you to sit for a few minutes and sign, but if there's no further discussion.
It looks like those are the doc approvals, right?
There are a few different things, I haven't even looked at them yet as to what they are, but.
Just the docs, I know I signed them.
Okay, we'll take a quick look.
Just a general comment to the chair, which I know you've already fielded from me via email, but kudos to town manager and your team. You, I've, this is my second meeting, and you thoroughly lay out the agenda items and the information, all the way to the point that the questions we ask probably are not changing the way we think about your recommendation or otherwise. In terms of operational efficiency, I'm wondering where, and, and this could be a discussion for our strategic plan, but maybe a little bit more in advance of where we can find some more efficiencies of taking your recommendations with regards to open meeting law and general comment where necessary. Thinking that the comments are more of the, the anomaly and not the standard, how can we start grouping these to get more approval, to get and attack some of the more important, bigger discussions that we need? Because we are spending, you know, again, second meeting, and I know there are protocols in place, but I think we're at a point now where we can challenge the way of thinking a little bit. Things still need due process, as we talked about in the first, but maybe not the way it's always been, so that we can start attacking some of these things that I know are on all of our issues that get sequestered to the last 30 minutes of a meeting when we're perhaps not at our most awake. I say that in jest, but ultimately, how can we make this more efficient? Because your recommendations are spot on, and our questions have been, you know, just some that we can pull out if necessary, an agenda item, but how, you know, it's not changing how we think for the most part. Again, two data points.
One thing that Mr. Renshaw has asked, you know, when he was newer on the job, and maybe hasn't said to you yet, but asking questions in advance of the meeting is very helpful, because you can see the packet on Thursday, shoot him a question on Friday and probably have the answer on Friday, or certainly have a good answer on Monday. and probably have the answer on Friday, or certainly have a good answer on Monday.
Yeah, and I say this because I don't want to, you know, violate open meeting law. I am hesitant to, you know, send and receive emails because of that.
Well, it's only to the town manager, and you can, if you feel like you need to copy the chair, you can, but you don't reply to all.
Correct, correct.
Which I made my mistake on day one of using my email. It was just the word "thank you," so. The only other thing I'd like to add on that point, this is a question, when Town Meeting voted in November to do the board, separate board for the liquor licenses, is that special legislation that now has to go through the legislature?
Only if we modify it to, why should we have town council?
So, I have a concern about taking up business that's not on the agenda, but I'm happy to chat with you about that. You can call or just pop in the office and I'll, I'll talk to you all about that.
Yeah, that's, that's calling just reminded me there's two strikes. I'll stop by tomorrow.
Thank you for the comments, and just so the board knows, we have talked about moving the consent agenda towards the top of the agenda so that folks oftentimes are waiting until the very, very end of sometimes long meetings, so we're talking about perhaps bringing that consent towards the front of the agenda. It's an efficiency and helpful, more convenient for folks that are waiting on decisions.
Adding some of the many other points in there that can be added there?
From Doug and from Ed, from Scott and Rose. I don't know if this was here to be signed by others. Could you pass that down?
Do we want to adjourn the meeting and intend to signing?
If everyone's done...
I'll make a motion to adjourn since it's no longer Mr. Miskel's job.
Yes, I know, I was going to look for who's going to be that foil, so, okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.